Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the June 5, 2007 Glendale City Council Study Session regarding our budget. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman, Quintero, Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
I do have two cards from members of the public who wish to speak at the outset on a priority basis. And the first speaker is Bruce Philpott. This isn't too soon for you, is it?
Is that?
Is this time convenient for you, or did you want to come after the?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Bruce Philpott, resident of Glendale. I'm here to talk about the CIP issue on Fire Stations 26 and 29. Fire stations should be suitable to accomplish tasks determined by performance in the field and not at the station. They are platforms for delivering emergency responses to distressed district residents. The ISO rating that set Class 1 for the city of Glendale and the Glendale Fire Department is done in part because of the existence of Stations 26 and 29, that they in fact meet the standards of a Class 1 city. And it will not be jeopardized in any way if those two buildings remain as they are. The consultant states that the two existing fire stations are made of brick and steel reinforced masonry and are structurally sound. Older government buildings, and especially fire stations, become a source of history and community pride. Even though the fire personnel interviewed by the consultant as to the conditions of the stations did not mention in any way space problems, the report said that some of the electrical and mechanical systems were older and need replacement in the future, recommending new, more modern, energy-efficient systems. Should some of these systems require replacement in the near future, it can be done with less than 1% of the cost to rebuild these two stations. In 2005, Station 29 underwent a complete rehabilitation of the kitchen and all of its sleeping quarters. No one, not even the consultant or fire chief, has said that the citizens will get an improved or enhanced service, or that any public benefit would accrue if the buildings were to be rebuilt. No one has yet answered the question: What has changed in fire operations that require rebuilding these two stations, especially in light of the fact that there are no more equipment, vehicles, or personnel to be added? Why were these stations acceptable yesterday but not tomorrow? Again, nothing has changed. This is very confusing. There has been no consideration for plans or cost estimates on the temporary relocation of the fire stations during the one to two years that it would take to demolish and reconstruct them. The library's future relocations are ill-defined and have no cost estimates. This total project, if it goes ahead, will cost at least $20 million with absolutely no offering of public benefit. The consultant has said, was paid, to conduct at least two public hearings and stakeholders' public meetings. Why weren't these conducted? Chief Gray last week said that a community room was needed because thousands of citizens use the fire stations each year. What was not mentioned is that 95% of them are elementary schoolchildren who tour the apparatus bay area only. He mentioned a need to have a room for citizen training. Both of the adjoining libraries to these stations have very nice community rooms that could be used for this purpose. Library at Station 29 is ADA compliant. Library at 26 is not ADA compliant and should be. Why not invite the consultant, whose report the Fire Department is using to justify the need for new fire stations, to appear at a future CIP study session? Perhaps he could provide more information for the justification because it is not in his report. If this project went ahead, it would cause great distress and disruption in both the Fire Department and the library system, and ultimately the citizens. Existing fire stations are standards in the industry and will remain so for many decades to come. $20 million improvements in two new stations would not improve the Fire Department's ability to respond to calls or other services that it provides. On the other hand, $20 million in new and improved parks would clearly be a public benefit. Oftentimes, you have difficult choices. This should not be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. The next speaker is Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. There are 207,000 people in Glendale, and fortunately, they all can't be here. So they look for representatives. Now, they've hired, there were four, but the three of you, to represent them and to take charge of the management and direct the management with your vision. Now, before you, this day, these days, you have a new budget. It's a very huge budget, one that I think that staff really doesn't want you to look at. They want you to rubber stamp it. They want you to accept what has been there. Now, I want to touch first on a few of the things that Mr. Philpott said. Driving here today, I saw the lawn service planting flowers at one of the fire stations. I thought that was neat. When I was a kid at the fire station, it was really nice to watch the firemen out there planting their own flower gardens and cutting their grass. Wow, what a concept. In Cleveland, the mayor ordered the Fire Department, this June, to start cutting the grass in the parks because they had a lot of time on their hands, something we would never do here. Just kind of, and I think Mr. Philpott certainly covered the important issues. Now, I've taken some time and I've looked at the, some of the, there it is right here, some of the budget. Now, I know that, I know at least one council member doesn't read anything, but in looking at this particular budget, I found an administrative associate who actually gets paid almost twice as much as your city manager. It was a shock. This person is being paid by you, with the benefits, with the perks, with everything, Now, not only is that person paid that amount of money, that person is provided $13,000 uniform allowance, that's more than $1,000 a month. They're also provided, let's see, $110,000 for furniture and equipment and $155,000 for general supplies. Now, you're never going to catch that, but you're going to approve it. Now, one of the other things, I just looked at the city managers, the management services, and it says here, one of the things they're going to do is they're going to publish or complete the Status of Women and Girls in Glendale Report for publication and distribution in 2007. It's already done. That's right. Here's the picture of the cover page. That is already done. You weren't, who's going to read this? Your staff relies on the fact that you won't. Now, as a representative of the people, Vanguard, we want you to really look at this because you're approving every black hole you can when you just say, "We're going to accept it." Now, look at the size of that budget. It's impossible for you, in four budget sessions of about two hours apiece, to read it. Now, I also have some other questions, and I hope that these will be answered. On the capital improvement program, because I know part of today is capital improvement, it looks like you're going to be spending a little over $1 million for KABC Talk, KABC's Channel 7 set aside. You're going to be the GC3 project. You're giving them back about $8 million. And there are several numbers like this. Now, I understand it's important to bring in these large developments who are going to bring in lots and lots of people who are going to really terrorize our infrastructure. Now, are they going to be charged those impact fees? And as a matter of fact, when you look at the positioning of GC3, I would imagine that the majority of those people will prefer to shop and eat and restaurant and network in Burbank. It's so much closer and easier to get to, and you don't have to drive through an industrialized area to get there. But you're giving all of these perks, and the question is, who's really read them? Who understands them? Who is going to stand up for the people? I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard.
Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Allen, before you leave, could you let me know where you found the $400 and some odd thousand dollars on that administrator?
Yes, it's in your budget packet on page I, the I-26, I-27 pages. And remember, I haven't gone through the whole budget. I don't get paid the big bucks.
I don't know which, did you find it?
No, I haven't found it, but.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Yeah, it's Fire Grants, Detail of Financial Resources Fund 265, and it goes on to the 265-401 Fire Grants.
Okay, Mr. Allers, if you'll try and locate that and appreciate an explanation.
Anything in here. I don't know what he's looking at.
I'm presuming it's a typo, but in any event, it.
It can't be a typo because two years before it was $765,000.
Mr. Mayor, if you can give Mr. Allers the reference, we'll look it up and get the detail.
As I said, Mr. Allers, please look that up and let us know what the situation is with that.
Thank you.
At your earliest convenience.
The other question I have is from City Manager. Could you explain the issue of the $8 million to the KABC?
I think it was $1 million KABC, and I think the reference was $8 million for GC3. Again, I don't have the detail. I presume that is the tax increment set aside as obligated under the development agreements with both KABC as well as GC3.
Okay, so, Mr. Aller, before we recess this afternoon, I mean, this morning, I would like to have an answer to that.
Oh, let me just.
Because if we leave some of these things unanswered, people ask questions, we don't get the answers to them, and what happens is that information stays in people's minds as the only information that is out there. So I think it's important, if Mr. Barry, Mr. Allen has found something, we need to deal with it. If he is not accurate or he needs some explanation, then we need to give that explanation so it's not hanging out there all by itself, because then we get cornered outside and they go, gee, why did you give Disney $8 million? So we need to do that.
Mr. Starbitt.
I was going to suggest we'll have Mr. Lanza-Fame respond to that issue before the morning's over. You want to do it now, Phil?
I can do it now.
Yeah. Thank you, Phil.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Starbitt is correct. The $1 million for KBC7 is over a 10-year period, the 10-year period of this CIP. The $8 million is in fact GC3. Both of those were agreed to set aside a certain percentage of the tax increment that was generated that would be reinvested into public infrastructure. We take it out here, it is put into a separate fund, and then it is used. As development comes online, that requires infrastructure, that money is used from that fund to pay for that infrastructure that allows further capacity.
And what do you mean by infrastructure?
Public improvements, streets, landscaping.
In that area.
Water, sewer, electricity, all of the things that would go along with development.
So part of their tax increment is used to basically improve the area that they are developing.
That is correct.
So if it's on Flower Street, we're going to put the money into Flower Street to improve Flower Street, whether it needs new sewers, whether it needs new infrastructure, new roads, landscaping, and so on and so forth.
That is correct. GC3 has about $80 million of public infrastructure in that northern corridor of the San Fernando Road corridor.
Projected over how many years?
Projected over 30 years.
So it's anticipated, it's anticipated they will produce that property tax revenue and the development agreement, which was subject to both analysis as well as a number of public hearings before it was approved by the city council back five years ago, six years ago?
KABC in 1998.
Okay.
GC3 in 2000, November of 2000.
Requires as those funds be set aside, accounted for separately, and put back into public improvements that are listed in great detail north of the 134.
Mr. Drayman.
This is not a question for Phil Lanza-Fame.
Thank you, Phil.
I just wanted to see if we could get a little more information about Mr. Allen's other comment regarding the impact fees.
Regarding the impact fees.
Yes.
He didn't bring.
Yes, he did mention that.
KBC7 was built before the impact fees were even introduced, so they are not subject to, they've already pulled their building permits, they've completed the project for several years. GC3 is subject to a development agreement, which at the time, which freezes the zoning and fees at the time. That was done in November of 2000, again, long before the impact fees were introduced. So no, they would not be subject to those impact fees.
Thank you. And, Mr. Weaver.
I'm still trying to figure where is the information Mr. Allen talked about. Where do I find it in the handouts we received?
Mr. Weaver, in what you have in front of you, if you would go to page.
I have three.
Eight of 19 is where you will find the GC3 and KBC7 set aside. Page eight of 19.
Okay.
So you see the KBC7 set aside on line three, and then if you go down another four lines, you'll see the GC3 set aside.
And that's over a number of years.
And it's over a number of years, and it will continue, both of those, as Mr. Lanza-Fame said.
It's not 2007.
That is correct. Not all in 2007.
Okay, and you'll get back to us with the other item that we request you to do.
Maybe Mr. Allen can show that page to you.
I found it already.
You found it already?
Mm-hmm.
So if you found it, could you deal with that?
I will need to look at it further on.
Oh, okay, so you have.
I will get a reply back to you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move along. We've got a long row to hold this today. That's all for our speakers, and I'll go to Mr. Starbitt.
Actually, I think we hit left roadways and we were moving into the other public works areas.
Page three of 19.
I'm just kidding. I'm referencing the mayor's not intended pun. We were on public works in a review of the capital improvement program. We're hoping today, if you can devote some more time, to possibly get through the general fund portion of the capital improvement program, but we wanted to take up where we left off last week, which is to clean up the balance of the public works capital improvement items. Steve, can you, or Ron, can you tell us where we left off?
Sure. We left off at the very top on page four of 19. We're going to start off with corrugated metal pipe, my favorite project.
This is our, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, pro, members of the council, this is our annual corrugated metal pipe replacement program. These pipes have been installed, were installed many, many years ago and have, over time, deteriorated, so we take.
Steve, where are they and what do they do? They are all over the city, and they convey storm water and runoff water into the storm drain system. So particularly in hillside areas, you may see, in some areas under a roadway, you may see corrugated pipe under a roadway.
Right.
Carrying a stream, carrying runoff, and again, they are all over the city, installed in some cases decades and decades ago, and in some cases deteriorated. So we've had an annual program of doing about $125,000 a year of replacing these corrugated pipe drainage systems. We replace them with concrete reinforced pipe. And in every case that we can, we build them to county standards, and we transfer them to the county for maintenance. They become their drains. We've been able to successfully transfer about a third of our drains that way. And you've occasionally seen those come up to council. We have a miscellaneous transfer drain project, and that's where we build it to county standards. They take the drain, and it becomes theirs for maintenance purposes and liability for, in perpetuity. It's public works, which the flood control is a part of public works, yes.
But in order to transfer to the county, the standards have to meet county standards.
Correct, correct.
Because you can't transfer, you have to keep it yourself.
Right.
Mr. Zern, are these the same kind of pipes that I saw when they took the sidewalks out up in the Montrose area, and we saw these unusual-looking pipes that went from the roof drain, from the base of the building out to the street culverts? They were replaced with concrete.
Mr. Drayman, those are roof drains, and it's possible that there may have been some metal pipe used in those as well. These are much larger. These are pipes that you're looking at could be as big as 60 inches in diameter to convey water, usually, as Mr. Starbitt indicated, under roadways and through the hillside areas. But we've actually got them in a number of places around the city.
They are most mobile. In some of the hillside.
We don't actually have asphalt streets. You can see them quite often carrying the water from one side to the other side and the next thing out under the roadway.
Another location that is extensively was in the flood control channels way back when they put in corrugated. A lot deteriorated, and what the Cor and the county have done is go and do spin lining to, instead of excavating and taking them out, put a concrete layer in. Hydraulics improves additional years of usability.
Correct. Steve, about how long before we solve the problem here? It's a go long, well beyond the current 10-year. I'd say at least double, 20 years probably at this rate. Some of the drains are difficult to get to. Some of them are, we cannot feasibly put it, build it to county standard, so we'll have to figure out a way that we can replace the pipe. And it may be spin lining, it may be some sort of destructive in place replacement or lining of the pipe to do that. But we're trying to attack all of those that we can now that we can get done, put the concrete reinforced pipe in and get it to the county as quickly as possible. One extreme example is we just finished the project up at Bran Park where we replaced, we actually filled the underdrain that was a corrugated metal pipe and put in a new 96-inch concrete reinforced pipe.
You had one in Cornwell, don't you?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you just replaced also.
Right.
Well, I guess part of the decision whether to replace or not is if you have to degrade the capacity because of development that wasn't there.
Correct.
Forty, 50 years ago.
Or if there is new development, or if we're putting in new roadways, all of those are projects that will, that will trigger us replacing the pipe as well.
Just like utilities, new subdivisions underground.
Correct, correct.
Do you have an inventory of all the pipes, what condition they're on, and you go based on which one needs to be changed before it collapses?
We have a pretty good inventory. Mr. Yusefian, we have a pretty good inventory. Unfortunately, we find some from time to time when we go through and do some other projects or have a massive rain event, but we have a pretty good inventory of where they are in a condition assessment with priorities for replacement.
Okay, so, because to me, sometimes it justifies changing the amount and increasing it if we are able to catch some of them ahead of time and do what Mr. Weaver was talking about, putting the concrete on the inside before they collapse. After they collapse, you can't do that anymore.
Correct.
So if we need to spend a little bit more money early on and catch these things and save ourselves a lot of money down the road, it's better to do them now than wait if it's 20 years, some of these pipes are going to rot away in 20 years and they will collapse, which means you have to completely take them out and put in a whole new line system in there. So I think maybe you may want to look at those and see which ones are at the point teeter tottering that.
Mr. Yusefian, we are attacking those that are in worse shape. These pipes have an incredible lifespan because I don't think that we've installed a corrugated metal pipe in 30 years in the city. So that gives you an idea of the age of these things.
Well, it also has to do with our soil condition. We're blessed to an extent. Our water pipes, same way, this is because of the type of soil we have in here, the conditions are not such that rots the pipes away.
Correct. In many cases, the pipe was, somebody was looking ahead and encased the pipes in concrete. So even with the bottoms would be essentially corroded out, it's still stable structurally and it can carry and convey water.
And for $125,000, how much do you replace?
Maybe two pipes.
Two pipes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Zern, thank you. Next item.
Next item is our public works garage CNG update.
This, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you, I'm sure you're aware, by state mandate and AQMD mandate, we are required to, all of our future purchases of refuse trucks and street sweepers must be CNG-powered, must be alternatively fueled, and CNG is the fuel of choice now. In addition, we have 35 beeline buses that are, that are CNG-fueled. In order for us to take those vehicles inside the maintenance bays, we have to completely redo the ventilation system and air handling system in there. Those vehicles cannot be taken inside of a structure to be worked on. So currently, we have no HVAC system within our maintenance bays. We have open flame heaters, so those will have to be replaced. We'll have to put in a new air handling system. You have to have a complete air change four times every hour. You have to have methane alarms at 20% and 40%. You have to retrofit all of the electrical outlets and all of the lights have to have explosion-proof casing and be rewired. So all of that has to be done before we can take a vehicle inside. It's essential for us to act quickly because even though we only have two CNG-powered refuse trucks and one street sweeper, those refuse trucks, it's inevitable that we have to take them inside because we have overhead cranes inside. We do as much of the PM work, preventative maintenance work, as we can outside or on the apron, but eventually, one of those CNG trucks is a automated side loader, and I can tell you the flapper in that, the compacting flapper, will have to be removed and replaced within the year because they usually go about a year before they have to be rebuilt. And we'll have to get inside and use that overhead crane. So it's become, and you can see in here, what we've done is accelerated the project and have actually borrowed money from the sewer fund in order to complete the project. And then at the point when we got to, and I forget, Mr. Allers, was it, oh, here it is, '09-'010 would be the payback?
Yeah, in '09-'10, we'll have the payback from the CIP to the sewer.
So, Steve, we have the money in prior years approved for this project. Correct. This becomes the payback of the loan from the sewer fund so we can advance the project. Correct. And the refuse fund will also be contributing as they are the significant owner, if you will, of the equipment.
So we have paid previously $500,000. Now we're paying another $500,000 because the total is $1 million. I mean, actually, the total was 1.75 million.
Right, and the numbers here are confusing because it's appropriations for each fund. The total project is $1 million, which the sewer fund is going to pay, and we'll get the appropriation in 2007/8. So the sewer fund's going to pay for everything upfront, and then the CIP and the refuse fund will pay it back in future years. So the total project is just $1 million.
So this is the CIP share of that $1 million project.
Correct.
And this is payback.
Okay, so this is the sewer, so this is the CIP, and then we're taking another $500,000 from the refuse fund and paying it.
Correct.
So together, they're going to be $1 million.
Right.
Okay, so question, why is this in here, $1 million?
Again, the numbers, I'll work on the. Again, the numbers, I'll work on, on the presentation. This is the appropriations for each separate fund?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's why it's double counting, if you will?
This is for the project.
Yes.
Right. This is for each individual project within the fund.
As a result, you get a duplication of the numbers, because it all has to be appropriated, whether it's for the project or whether it's for a payback.
Correct.
So, in effect, it looks like it double counts the numbers. It isn't, because the loan does the project, then this is the repayment back to those respective funds where the money came from.
Okay.
And we've completed the RFP for this, and we'll issue that on July 1st pending your approval of the budget and get this project done as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next project is the Shoal Canyon Landfill Reserve. As the council is aware, we are the owners of our own landfill up at Shoal Canyon, and we are responsible for setting aside money for the post-closure care. The LA County Sanitation District is responsible to actually close the landfill, and they are setting aside their money to do that. We are required by state law to maintain it for a minimum of 30 years.
We have to fund 30 years?
We have to fund 30 years of maintenance. So this is the money that we are setting aside to fund for that eventual post-closure care of the Shoal Canyon landfill. We currently have about $17 million set aside for this. The latest estimate that I received was upwards of $41 million that is required to be set aside once we actually get to closing the landfill. So this is our plan of setting aside money every year in order to get us to that $41 million, which will grow each year as inflation incurs and so forth, so.
And this, just, just for some detail, closure is the gas collection system and taking care of the air and water, environmental control systems, making sure that it's irrigated, making sure that it's landscaped and taken care of.
And if the life is extended?
This will be extended as well.
These numbers just get bumped out.
Correct.
Correct, correct. We will not, we will not overfund this, but we will fund it as we, as we go, so that when we get to the actual closure date, we will have the money set aside, as per state law.
We're actually very fortunate in that, at the time we established this, the state was very adamant that this be put in a trust that we would actually have no control over. And we fought hard to keep it within our own budget and set it aside, which allows us the flexibility to alter the numbers as we either begin to overfund or extend the life of the landfill. So it's very positive that we have that flexibility.
If we extend the landfill, still $41 million?
That could change, Mr. Yusefian.
So it could change to a higher amount?
Yes.
Because it may change-
It's a very long and sophisticated formula that you have to fill out, and it depends on how much fill you have in there and how much square acreage that you have, and the gas collection system and so forth. But it more than likely would increase that $41 million.
And we should keep in mind that the state agency that oversees that, once you're closed, every year, they will evaluate whether or not, in the next 30 years, you're going to have enough money in place. So they require that you fund 30 years, but in the first year of the 30 years, they'll assess that for the next 30 years, and the next 30 years, the next 30 years, as you go through each year. And that landfill will be there much longer than 30 years after its closure. So this is something that you buy forever, for all intents and purposes. You're obligated for it. But by then, there'll probably be means by which those resources could become a positive asset at some point in time. So what we think of as a landfill, it just sits there. Someday, there could be other uses for the materials that are in the landfill, given that you could be sitting here talking about this 50 years from now, whether it's the gas or whether it's actually the materials in the landfill, could actually have a, could be a positive asset, opposed to a negative.
Gasification.
Yeah, gasification, for example.
I was there two weeks ago, and I'm telling you, as I drove there to get rid of some stuff I had from home, it's the cleanest operation. I hadn't been there for a long time. It was just incredible. The place is just clean as it could be, with the exception of the area that they are working. The rest of the landfill, I just stood up there and looked at it. It's nice and clean, watered, and all the dust is down. And I mean, compared to other places, because I, you know, sometimes I used to go to the Bradley Dump, and now that is closed.
Big difference.
It's no longer accepting anything. That has been closed for at least seven weeks. But huge difference between that operation and our operation, so-
No question.
My kudos to those guys.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And is that it with you this morning?
That is it for our public works?
One thing, no, before you leave, I brought this up last week, and we still need to deal with that. When we passed the EIR on the downtown specific plan, we were supposed to do some work on Central and some of the other arteries. They were part of the EIR on the downtown specific plan. Where is that plugged in, in this budget?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, it's not specifically plugged into this budget.
So when do we get, that needs to be done by 2010, according to the downtown specific plan, CIR. What is the cost, and when do we do this?
What we're doing right now is putting the, the numbers together for the specific segments of the street, which we're getting a portion of Central done with the Americana project, the remaining portion. Then we're tying that into what our, our budget is now, and looking at how, how much more or less we are going to, more is going to be the case, that we're going to need to get the job done. And then that's when we'll, we're assembling that information right now, working with the planning department.
Because you got-
Put that all together.
Three more years.
Yes.
Mr. Drayman?
I have a question. I don't know, it's a different group of pages, but it's still part of the Public Works. It is page 20 of the packet that goes up to 22. I'm new to all this, so forgive, forgive a question that might seem obvious to all of you. Let's see that there's still, there are still funds, almost a quarter million dollars, I guess. It's 20.
Page 20.
Uh, in an account that was talking about proposed double decking of lot, municipal Lot 7?
Still have that project open.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Drayman, we've kept that, that account open. That's, we used that money primarily to upgrade the other lots and to purchase the Paradise Ford lot. The remaining balance, we've left in there for potential improvements to the Paradise Ford lot. And with that being discussed, about what the end-use of that lot's going to be, we just decided not to close it. We don't have any other plans outside of that. We could easily close it, let it go back into the fund. We just thought we'd hold it there to see what, what's going to happen with the Paradise Ford lot. And-
We should probably, Mr. Drayman, I'm sorry to interrupt you, we should probably rename that.
For closing.
Particular item, or close it and reallocate it.
It's a concept that sort of went away when dinosaurs ruled the earth.
Yeah, this was brought to my attention, and I go, I don't think that, I think that was brought up when Mr. Haji was still in council.
I had been here for a month, and that's 20, almost 21 years ago, so.
Right, so that, that calls you, so.
Long time. If I can, Mr. Mayor, the council made a decision not to proceed with the decking at the time we bought the Paradise Ford. So this is a, this is, if we were holding money for Paradise Ford, at least the title should be changed. And this is an item that can always revert back to balances, and then it can be re-appropriated if, if indeed there's a need at some point.
Correct.
Another question, just quickly. Can someone remind me what we paid for that, those three parcels that we call the Paradise Ford lot?
What did we pay? Do you recall, Steve?
1.8 million.
Do you recall the size?
I want to say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 45,000 square feet or some, no, no, I'm sorry, I got the wrong lot. It's almost 80,000 square feet.
A little under 2 acres.
Yes.
So, so clearly, some of those funds went elsewhere, because the overall budget for that was over $3 million.
Well, we did improve the lot.
Well, we-
So what came out of those funds, Steve?
Well, we had to, we had to purchase demo and, and do the work we did. But at the same time, Mr. Drayman, you recall, we made some alterations to a number of lots in the area. We had some additional signage and infrastructure work. I don't recall exactly what the cost of that was.
It's really expensive signage.
No, I'm not, Mr. Drayman, I'm necessarily saying that that's the, the difference in this account, but that's the other work that came out of there, as far as any additional-
We did some reconstruction on the large lot. We changed the entrances and restripped, as I recall.
We demoed the buildings and, and we did-
No, no, the large lot, the-
Oh, yes.
The Lot 7.
No, no, we did, we did some changes to a number of the lots in the area, including some landscaping. But I'll go back and get an expenditure count of it.
Just curious, we, we get asked that question a lot.
Sure. We can run that pretty easily, I think. Right, Mr. Allers?
Yes, we can.
And FYI, Lot 3 is, is the largest of the lots up there. Lot 7 is the one down on Broadview.
Okay. So 3 is the one that had all the work done to it?
I think so. I think so. Thank you.
One question, Zern?
I have a question. On the same page, you have parking lot resurfaced 2005-6, parking lot resurfaced 2003-4, and you have some money left in those, I mean, current expenditures. It doesn't say which parking lot resurfaced. Is it just all parking lot resurfaced?
Right. We just put an annual program in there to see what lots would require resurfacing during the year. We also use this to assist if, if there's lots in the parks that may need resurfacing.
Okay, so that, so you have about, according to this, you have about $45,000 left over in that account from 5-6?
Okay.
And, and so you're going to use that for this year?
Yes.
Is that what that is for?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And 03, 04, you spend the whole thing, so why is that even here?
We'll put it on the next closure list to, to take off of there. So it's just a matter of cleaning that up and, and closing it out.
Okay, so when did you use the last of it?
This year, I believe.
Oh, you used it this year?
Some of it.
And that's why it's in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allers. Mr. Zern?
Thank you. Moving along, our next section is for Parks and Recreation. And we will start off with our ball field light replacement next year, $840,000.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of City Council. As you recall, we came to you with an emergency request to replace ball field lights at Dunsborough, Helen Coney, and Bev Herman Field. We did that. We need some more money, and that's part of the, the request here, for Stangle Field. Stangle Field would probably cost us about $320,000, if not more, to replace the, the eight light standards. And part of the cost of that is a relocation of the scoreboard, as well as we have a cell antenna, several cell antennas on the poles that have to be relocated. And these were contracts that were done before I came onboard, but the $30,000 of that cost is due to relocating a cell antenna. And we're trying to, trying to negotiate with the, with the cell company, but I'm not sure how much leverage we have. So that, the $840,000 takes care of all, all of those fields.
And Stangle Field is a large field?
It's, yeah, it's the largest of the fields.
South of Verdugo Park.
Right.
Who uses that field?
Well, a number of, Connie Mack, the Little Leagues use it, Crescent Valley High School uses it, Glendale City College uses it. It's used extensively for baseball.
And we have an item tonight, right, on dealing with the Shoal Canyon ball field?
Shoal Canyon ball fields, right, we do have an item.
And that, that has been already-
It's a separate item.
It's a separate item. It's been, that's also light replacements.
That's light replacements and some-
Part of it, some other stuff.
Right.
But that's already been budgeted.
That's been budgeted, and actually, almost $600,000 of that is, is grant money. So that's being done with other monies.
So there's none of that in here?
No.
In that $840?
No.
And these are all the Musco-
Musco lights.
Reflector without the spillage, minimizing the spillage.
Minimizing spillage, great coverage, and it's 40% more efficient than the current lights that we have here. So we should be saving on utilities as well.
And we have got letters from the league about how impressed they are with the new lights, and what it does. Very impressed with it.
Yeah, I have to give kudos to Shahin Begumi, our project manager. I mean, he really worked his tail off to make sure we finish those earlier than we anticipated, so the kids can get back on the field. So they are really impressive lights, if you haven't seen them.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, so we know how these, these documents relate to each other. In, in many cases, you're looking at a CIP capital improvement budget proposal for projects in '07-'08. And there have been projects and funding set aside in, in previous years for projects that frankly may conclude this year or in subsequent years. Mr. Drayman referenced the money set aside for what was listed as the Lot 7 decking. That's a list of existing funded projects. And in this case, on Stangle Field, and that was this handout that Mr. Drayman was referencing, is the, it's labeled projects, it's actually existing funded capital improvement program projects. On page 8, you'll see a listing for Stangle Field.
For unfunded.
And in there is some existing funding that was approved in a previous year. So the total funding available will be what you approve in, in the '07-'08 10-year CIP, plus the available funding that is here, right?
Right, yeah, we had about-
So just, just so you have a sense of how these documents relate to each other. And each year, we not only look at the projects going forward, but we go back and look at the projects that were already funded, what's their status, how many can be closed out. And as a result, those funds revert back to balance in CIP and can become available again. And in some cases, we'll reevaluate projects not done, not completed, that were funded in prior years, and whether or not priorities have changed, or things, maybe that funding needs to be adjusted and/or brought back in for reallocation.
And you'll see, there is another item under unfunded, which is Stangle Field, and we have some money for Stangle Field. It really is to take care of the bleacher area. And we can talk about that, and I can show you some photos of, of what that looks like. But many of our, our facilities, infrastructure, need replacement. It's just been, I think, deferred maintenance over the years, and now they're in a condition where they absolutely have, we absolutely have to address it, or else it's, it's just going to deteriorate to a point where we would have to demolish it. So we're coming to you with, with those requests, unfortunately, but it has to be done at this point.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Next is, I think, the Adult Recreation Center, and that's on track. We anticipate completion date of May 2009. And this money in here is really additional money we needed for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. I didn't think we had enough in there. We needed more money. And so that's what this takes care of.
Okay. Next item?
Park upgrades. This is really just a standard line item that's been in the budget throughout the years. What we normally do, what we have planned for the park upgrade money, is usually one playground equipment replacement and one restroom renovation a year. And that will eat up to $500,000, really, between soft costs and the cost of the playground equipment and the restroom renovation. And we, you know, I can give you the list of the, the playgrounds that we're, we're looking at. In 2007-'08, we have Fremont, the playground equipment at Fremont, and the restroom replacement at Fremont. In '08-'09, car park, playground replacement, and then the brand West Playground Equipment renovation.
You got some extra playground equipment now, right?
We do, and we're going to be able to utilize it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking for a place. In fact, we're, we're going to be replacing, I think, six playgrounds at one time, so economy of the scale.
Before you go that far, as I was looking at the other pages that Mr. City Manager was referring to, there's a section in here for the Fremont Park tennis courts, $150,000. $16,000 has been used. I did get a report that you guys have pretty much ready to move forward with the design. Everything is all in place. All you're expecting us to do is just give you the go-ahead, and you just start on those two tennis courts.
Right. I think the, the $150,000 was placed in there years back because of the, the mitigation for the ARC, and that was part of the mitigation measures.
Is that $150,000 going to cover it?
No, the $150,000's not going to cover it.
What is it going to take to do those?
Um, I think it was close to $850,000.
For two courts?
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, tennis is an expensive hobby.
Well, it's all, it's all getting expensive.
And Mr. Mayor, you recall, that's if they're done at Fremont Park. Again, we've, we've yet to bring to a conclusion whether or not we proceed with the school district and looking at renovating the high school courts. We've yet to have a final discussion with Mr. Escalanti about the conditions for having a joint project, which would come back to you, or if not acceptable, then moving forward with the alternative, which is Freeway, Fremont Park.
Why can't we do both?
We do.
Because you don't have the money to do both. You could do both, but at this point, you don't have funds set aside to do both.
But you're right. We, we are about 35% in terms of the construction drawings at Fremont, and we stopped those so we can take a look, look at Glendale High School, so.
I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I'm, I'm for moving forward with Fremont Park. And we've talked about this two and a half years now.
Mr. Starbird?
Your, your last direction to us was to pursue the high school tennis court renovations. You had a review at one of your evening meetings, actually.
Yeah.
And directed us to pursue that. The district board's response to the renovation project was that they would not commit to a, I'll call it a match. There was about $175,000 gap between our available funding and the cost of renovating those tennis courts. And frankly, they'd given us feedback about the length of a commitment for our use of those, which we frankly felt was unacceptable. which we frankly felt was unacceptable. We haven't brought that back to you because the superintendent's indicated a willingness to look at those issues, and we have a meeting currently set up with him.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So we can come to a conclusion, and then bring it back to you, so you can give us direction whether we proceed with the high school, or we proceed with Fremont. So we should have that back to you shortly.
Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, that was my question. That answers it partly. So, I mean, one of the big stumbling blocks is money, but the other stumbling block is the school district not wanting to give access to the citizens of Glendale.
Well, it was more, we wanted a 10-year commitment that we wouldn't be, you know...
Bumped out.
Bumped out. And they would only give us a five-year commitment. And to make that capital investment just didn't make sense for five years.
Well, to tell you the truth, 10 years to me isn't long enough.
Right, and that was the minimum we were asking for.
Thought it'd be 15, 20 at least.
Yeah, we were asking 10 as a minimum, and then if a need arose that we couldn't have the public use app, they were going to have to buy us out.
Right.
On a pro-rated reimbursement of our investment. Now, we view the 10 years as a minimum, but if you've got a buyout following that, then if they decided they had to have it, they were going to have to write us a check. And those are the details that frankly, first blush reaction from the school board was not very positive. But we've needed to pin down whether, if that's their final, if that's their final decision, we'll bring that back to you, and you can make the ultimate decision. But...
Do we have a field, does Parks and Rec have a field in terms of the need for more courts? I mean, are there more people constantly waiting to play tennis? Because I'm thinking Fremont and the school site both.
I think even two courts of Fremont could accommodate the need. And we've talked to the Glorieta Concessionaire and the Fremont Concessionaire. They can accommodate the need out there. I think what you're seeing is because of development, a lot of the private tennis courts are being purchased and developed into either commercial development or housing, really. So we're feeling more pressure for public courts. And so that's where the pressure's really coming from. It's not so much, I think, they're getting more and more use for tennis, it's just the tennis courts are disappearing.
Yeah. I appreciate Mr. Starbuck's efforts in dealing with the school district and trying to resolve this loss of tennis courts problem, but I appreciate that it will be coming to us shortly. And personally, I would like to commit the funds to get the field started on Fremont, especially since we'd already taken a few steps down that road. And we can discuss that and get the latest, hopefully, sooner.
Yeah, we'll have that on your agenda in the next month, month and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Once we have our meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
We'll wrap it up.
Let's see. What does that take us to? Central Park renovation?
Central Park renovation, basically what this was, at some point, because of the improvements at the ARC, we needed to take care of the park as well. Since we're removing a building, once we build a new building, we're going to remove the old building. This money was just to really re-green Central Park. And that's basically what it's going to pay for.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing more, really, nothing less.
Green is the key word.
Yeah, right.
And the half a million dollars the following year, 2008-9, what is that for?
Again, that's to...
That's re-green again?
Yeah.
That's awful lot of green.
Well, actually, it's not very much.
It's not much, because the original, back then, I think, four or five years ago, was $1.8 million to really fix it up.
This is pretty minimalist.
Is it just grass?
Well, this is grass and a few plantings. But recall, there's the long-range question of whether or not, with the potential development along Brand and the need for parking, whether we'd ever look at a subterranean parking structure in there. For that purpose, we proposed not to invest millions of dollars in big upgrades in the park, but leave it fairly minimalist green space.
Right.
Easy to maintain, and frankly, if a few years from now you wanted to tear it up, to go underground parking, you wouldn't have lost millions of dollars in it. But Central Park could easily, if you were going to do a full-level park development, it could be millions of dollars to do the right job. This really is minimalist screening.
Right.
Yeah, it could be really nice.
Yeah.
So why is $100,000 one time, $500,000 the other time?
I think the $100,000 would start us off with the landscape plan and the re-greening plans, and then the other is just for the...
You're going to put grass there? What plan do you need?
It may be more than just grass. It would be, you know, shrubbery, brush, you have to make it look...
Okay, so it's irrigation plan and all this stuff?
Yeah.
Luckily, in any circumstance, over two years, you've got $600,000 available for.
All right, got it. Okay.
Thank you. I think that's a wise, wise plan, not to invest too much in the event we do go underground.
Right.
We could talk about that in the planning.
Yeah, and that was part of the reason why we recommended moving the building to the other side as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Maryland Mini Park. You know, we've been in discussions with the redevelopment agency and the BMW dealership. There's an interest by the BMW dealership, as you know, to put subterranean parking underneath. We're just waiting for Nick Lamb. We're working with the consultant, the GRA consultant, to look at the economics of it, and what he may have to pay us for use of this property at this point. But we're ready to go. We've got a designer onboard. It's just a matter of working out the details with BMW dealership. We're working on it.
And so what is this million for?
Well, this million was for us to develop the park. There may be a possibility where the BMW dealer develops the park. So this could save us a million dollars.
So if that agreement comes to pass, then this money wouldn't be used for this purpose and go back into...
Do we have a deadline for that?
Well, we're really pushing it.
We bought this land about three years ago. We did a lot of, we spent a lot of money pulling all those caissons out and everything else out of the ground, because it was supposed to be an apartment building there.
Yeah.
Went through eminent domain and all of that stuff. So we've been working on this site for a long, long time. That neighborhood's been waiting for a park.
And I can tell you, I think Nick wants to really move fast on it, but he just wants to make sure the economics make sense for him, in terms of how much money he's going to invest in the subterranean.
Longer he waits, more it's going to cost.
Yeah.
We should also have a certain amount of deadline. We should make a decision, we should say, okay, this is the time, you know? Make a decision in 60 days, 80 days, I don't know, 120 days, whatever. But we need to kind of move on.
Yeah, and we agree, I think, but it's just a nice opportunity at this point, if we can save a million.
Because if he says no, it's going to cost you more than a million dollars two years from now.
Yeah, let's let him know that we would be looking at some sort of timeline, time limit, time deadline.
And just as a reminder, we started looking at this property originally as a housing project.
Yeah.
And then it evolved into park as we got further into the Garfield Neighborhood Improvement Program, which is really just now being kicked off with the development of housing there. So this concept of this being a park wasn't the original image for this area, but it kind of evolved into that as we got further down the road, so...
And it was a good use.
It's a very good use.
I don't want to push it too hard to lose the deal.
And it's a good opportunity, so...
I don't want to push it too hard to lose the deal.
Phil was just telling me that the appraisal's about three weeks away, and that's what's going to really push the economics.
Oh, okay, okay, got it, okay.
No, not to push hard, but just to perhaps give a gentle nudge towards completion.
Well, if it's three weeks away, that's fine.
We continue to move it along. It's not sitting out there still.
Nick Lamb does a lot for this community.
It's not just sitting out there still.
And to try to push him too hard, I mean, might cooperate. I don't want to do that.
And I think he really wants to do it, and it would make sense for both parties, really.
It's just that the economics got to work for it.
Right. And as you can see on the screen, we've done some work on a very, very preliminary, but we're ready to go with, when he's ready.
Is that what it would look like?
Well, that's just a brief concept, you know?
With subterranean underneath?
I like the red, yellow, and blue trees. Those are nice.
So is that green? Is that concrete, or is that...
That's what we were afraid of. That's why we didn't want to put it on the board.
Let's not go there.
What does that white mean? White means concrete?
We're getting far afield. I'm being warned by the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, maybe?
Once again, and Cedar Park, if you want to move on.
Cedar Park, please.
We are going to be coming to, I think, within the next week or two.
The next week's agenda.
Next week's agenda with Cedar Park, to show you the design. And this was based on input from the neighborhood, and just to get your either approval or some changes, and we can move forward with it.
Cedar will be our first, I'll call it our first post-Adams Hill mini park, mini park to come to you. So it's going to have a lot more detail than just the general concept that you saw with the Adams Square.
We'll probably have a model up here as well.
I want to see elevations from four sides. We do have a historic building there, or quasihistoric building there, that is being renovated, so I'd like to see that. It has gone to the Historic Preservation Commission for that?
Yes, it has, yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to see that.
And I'd like to know the additional cost we're now going to go to in the planning and design to get to the construction.
Well, whatever we do, Dave, it's cheaper than what we spend. We spend $300,000.
Mr. Yosefian, I made a request. I'd like to know the additional cost.
Please include that in the report.
I'm sorry, for Cedar?
Sorry, what was that for? What was the request for?
Additional cost for extra design requirements.
We're increasing the amount of detail we're going to do now because of one bad experience.
Oh.
So I'd like to know what additional cost for model and everything else we're now going to start associating with mini parks.
Well, and...
Fair question to ask.
Right, and we can provide that to you.
Thank you.
And I think at this point, we're also looking at some software instead of just the models, which is kind of like the Americana software, where it shows you...
Oh, you don't need a model.
Exactly what, well, she has a model at this point, you know, a large one that she's going to bring. And she used that with the community meetings.
Oh, I see.
So it's not something she's created just for this meeting.
Thank you, George. We'll look forward to that.
Oh, Lila, okay. Lila does a good job.
And that is it for Parks and Rec projects, correct?
No.
It's not the library?
It's past the park projects.
Thank you, George. Next up?
Next up is library. And we have three projects listed here. Our new Northwest Glendale Branch Library, Montrose Branch Library, and an annual project on renovating existing libraries.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me just get my PowerPoint up Very good. This morning, we have brought forward our capital improvement project proposals for the Glendale Public Library system. There's sort of three parts to this presentation, and I'll try to walk through it very quickly. The first part of the presentation has to do with the branch libraries in the north area of the city. As council is aware, back in 2003, service area assessment was conducted by Civic Technologies, which is a firm that specializes in data analysis. They looked at census data, current census data, and plotted that on GIS maps. They looked at patterns of library usage, the current facilities. They didn't look at every single library, but they looked at most of our libraries, and the services provided at those libraries. They looked at projected population growth trends. I think it was based on SCAG data, as well as the impacts of that population growth, and where applicable, the relationship of those libraries to fire stations that are adjacent to them. A very quick sum-up of the recommendations in the report was the closure of three branch libraries. Of course, this is over a long period of time, and the construction of three new, better-located, larger, high-tech libraries that can sort of provide the sorts of modern library service that many other libraries do. They also recommended the expansion of the Montrose Branch Library. So just to give you a visual idea of what they were recommending, they recommended the closure of the Grandview Branch Library, which is in west Glendale, the Casa Verdugo Branch Library, which is in central Glendale, and the Chevy Chase Branch.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Nancy, but I'd need to step down. I have the same issue with the Casa Verdugo Branch as I had with Station 26, so I'll be viewing it from the audience, and Mr. Draymond will take over.
Buying libraries? What are you doing?
Well, I guess, to be...
It's a Casa Verdugo library.
To be clear, I have an interest in real estate adjacent to the Casa Verdugo Branch, and to participate would be a conflict of interest.
Very good. Mayor Protem and City Council members. To give you an idea visually of the plan, again, the proposal was to close the Grandview Branch Library in west Glendale, the Casa Verdugo Branch Library in central Glendale, and the Chevy Chase Branch Library that's up in Chevy Chase Canyon, close to the border with La Quinata. And then they proposed the expansion of the Montrose Branch Library. So if that plan were carried forward over a number of years, this would be the approximate new configuration of the branch libraries. There would be a new, larger northwest branch library, which would be the result of the combination of the Casa Verdugo and the Grandview Branch Libraries. There would be a new northeast branch library, and then the construction of a full-scale southeast branch library. As council is very aware, we are under construction on the Adams Square storefront library, because we felt that library service in this area of town was essential to get it up and running quickly. So that's visually the configuration. I just want to walk through briefly a little bit about these buildings. The Casa Verdugo Branch Library is co-located with Fire Station 26 on North Brand. It's the one that's in central Glendale, in the middle of the map. It, like Fire Station 26, was built in 1951, and it's approximately 4,500 square feet. The study showed that it generally serves the surrounding neighborhood, although a lot of the patrons in that area of town also use the central library quite heavily. Just to give you some idea of usage, they checked out, or patrons borrowed approximately 43,000 items, could be books or DVDs or whatever, in 2005-6. And the number of people that walked through the gate, these could be duplicated, and I can guarantee you, some of them are duplicated people, was about 24,000. The facility is very undersized. It currently houses two to three times the number of materials that it was designed to hold. And while the building is well-kept, it's been maintained, it hasn't been touched structurally, as far as I'm aware, since 1951. It's just simply not equipped to handle modern library demands. Many libraries have teen areas, they have literacy services, they have modern conference rooms, they offer computer classes. It's very difficult to do those kinds of things at this branch library. The other branch that the study recommended for closure was the Grandview Branch Library, which was built in 1964, so it's over 40 years old. It's a little bit larger than the Casa Verdugo Branch Library. Again, it generally serves the surrounding neighborhood. Both of these branch libraries serve the Kepel, Toll, and Hoover students. Grandview is a little unique in that it is directly across the street, across Fifth Street, from Jefferson Elementary, so it gets quite a bit of heavy use from the students at that school. Again, the facility is undersized. It holds a number of more materials than it was designed to hold originally, and it's very difficult to provide modern library service there. So the benefit of a new facility or facilities, as I've mentioned, many libraries like Pacific Edison have computer labs, so we can hold training courses for seniors in various languages, do job training. They have areas for teens, literacy tutoring, citizenship centers. As was mentioned earlier today, neither of these libraries is fully ADA compliant. Better public meeting space, the Grandview Branch Library, for example, has no public meeting space. And I can't, with the exception of the Brand complex, think of a public meeting space that's very large in the west area of town, so this would bring a lot of benefit. Many libraries have sort of discovery centers for childrens, cafes, you know, cultural centers, small art exhibits, music events, that sort of thing. It's very difficult to provide these kinds of things. So as I mentioned earlier, the report recommended the construction, actually, of three branch libraries. We're looking at two of those on this slide. One is in the northwest area of town, a sizable branch library that would be somewhere in between the Grandview and Casa Verdugo Branch Libraries. So this would be what we call the northwest branch. It also recommended the construction of a fairly sizable branch located somewhere between the Casa Verdugo and Chevy Chase Branch Libraries. We sort of refer to this as the northeast branch library. So let me walk you through the money. It's a little confusing from the spreadsheets that you have. So we have the little spreadsheet and the big spreadsheet of the CIP requests. What you'll see on the little spreadsheet is that council has already approved $419,000 to provide an interim site for the Casa Verdugo Branch relocation, if that is necessary. This would provide for tenant improvements in a, perhaps a leased space, if it is required. On the large spreadsheet for the library, there is a $500,000 request for the northwest branch library that would provide for design, EIR fees, that kind of thing. And then back on the small spreadsheet, there is an unfunded request for a total of $11 million to actually construct one or the other of these branch libraries in north Glendale. The assumption in these figures is that the new branch library would be built on city land, or perhaps, and/or perhaps be a collaborative project that we would do in conjunction, perhaps with housing, maybe with parks.
So in other words, $11 million doesn't contain any value for land if we had to purchase land?
That's correct. The plan also recommended an expansion of the Montrose Branch Library of approximately 2,800 square feet. That library is currently about 10,500 square feet. It was built in '61, and unlike... It was built in '61, and unlike the Grandview or the Casa Verdugo Branch Libraries, it was renovated in 1985. To give you some idea of the usage there, they had about 80,000 items that were borrowed, and about 72,000 people walked through the door in 2005, '06. Montrose does not, it has a very, very small teen space. It's basically one small row of books for teens. It does have a meeting facility, however, that meeting facility was not touched in the '85 renovation, so it's small, and it's very difficult to have PowerPoints and those kinds of things there. And there also has been a desire expressed from the folks in that area of town to start a sort of local history collection for the Montrose Chrissena Valley history, so having a small space to begin a sort of special collections. So, what you'll see on your large spreadsheet, on the recommended list, is $5.5 million for an expansion of the Montrose Branch Library.
For the 2,800 square feet?
Yes. It may require the demolition of the fire station, depending on council's direction, or it may require renovation of the existing fire station to adapt its use for the library's purpose. And so, depending on the direction we want to go there, it may be costly.
The 5.5 include the demolition?
Yes.
It does cost, include the demolition of the fire station? Wouldn't that be, you know, if you're moving the fire station, so it wouldn't be under the fire station section, it would be under the... I'm just thinking out loud.
Okay.
That's all. What it would cost if you had to build a 12,000, 13,000-square-foot library from scratch?
The study did also look at building a new branch library, and if you'll indulge me for one moment, let me see if I can bring up those costs. And this would be $2,003. The cost, including land, was $12 million.
On the same site?
No. It was estimated...
You had $11 million estimated for the Casa Verdugo replacement?
Correct.
How many square feet was that?
The... Well, it depends. That figure is in between what was recommended for northwest, which was 24,000 square feet, and northeast, which was 13,500.
Last number we had from an architect we were working with on the Hoover Building, the estimate there was $400 to $500 a square foot. So, that's probably a figure you could apply to any number of square foot itself. If it's a 12,000-square-foot building, and if you're not having to purchase the land, you're in the $6, $7, $8 million range.
I would like to ask a question, please. I might as well lob this bomb out there right now, because it's floating around, so let me put a name to it. And I'd like to see if I can get some information with regard to a different notion with regard to our library, which would be moving the library closer to the La Chrissena area, and perhaps a site like a Rock Haven, which is currently sitting on Honolulu Avenue and is a historic site, and would provide perhaps adaptive reuse of that facility for both library classrooms, an expanded library classrooms, site for a historical center, and park space, which would leave the existing library and fire station site for an expanded fire station if council chooses to go that direction, which would take up that peninsula altogether. It would still leave the parking site, Lot 8, for a temporary site for a fire station during expansion, if necessary.
And a redevelopment site later on, after the fire station goes in there?
Yes, I mean, if you want to go that far with it, basically, what I'm suggesting is a relook at a variety of needs in that area. Right now, on the map that you've presented, it's hard to see on this copy, but the map that shows the libraries, actually, with my eyes, it's hard to read that one, too.
I'm sorry.
That's not your fault, that's my eyes. You can't see the annex up there, but...
I believe Rock Haven is here?
It's further out.
It's further west on Honolulu Avenue.
Past La Chrissena, it's closer to the other one.
It's essentially over near Verdugo City. But my point is, you can't see the annex on this map. I'm curious how far it is right now from the current Montrose site to the next... Geographically, how large an area is this serving, especially once you close the Casa Verdugo Branch?
The, how big of an area is Montrose?
No, I know how big Montrose is. I'm talking about how large, in other words, where would someone need to go to get to the next library? That's serving a very large geographic area, is what I'm getting at.
It is indeed, and it's our busiest branch library.
Yeah. It is the only, it's the only thing serving the annex, the Montrose area, Spar Heights, Montecito Park, Verdugo Woodlands, all of that.
And one might argue, depending on which way they want to go, it could be coming down Cuenyada, Verdugo quite a ways. I mean, people may go over to Casa, or they may feel more inclined to go up to...
To the canyon.
Montrose. They're not likely driving up Chevy Chase, especially given the limited service at that library. So, you really have those two libraries servicing all of the north end, I'll call it the north-central, meaning north of 134 into the Verdugos, and all of the Cuenyada, Verdugo area.
Well, to address what Councilmember Yusefian was reminding me about, about a redevelopment issue or development issue related to that number eight lot, it would also provide an opportunity, should council choose to look at that, to provide a retail use for a portion of that lot. Currently, in terms of retail issues in that area, there is, for example, one grocery store, and there has been an interest expressed in bringing something there, like a Trader Joe's. There's a site in La Chrissena, which is probably the size of this council chamber, it's old, 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 and I would be willing to bet they would be interested in looking at that site. So, anyway, basically, what we're talking about is a relook at that area with some various opportunities that could solve a variety of problems. An expansion of a fire station, an expansion of a library, and perhaps moving it in a direction that is closer to the annex, which has never really had a library, Glendale Library in it, and at the same time, satisfying some needs in terms of retail and so on. So, and an adaptive reuse and preservation of a historic site. Councilmember Weaver.
I just want to make sure I understand. Your assumption is $11 million or so without the land?
The estimate that was done by the consultant is $12,165,000. This was in $2,003.
Without?
Including about $4 million for land acquisition costs.
$4 million for land, wasn't it?
And the site that they were recommending...
Nancy, I'm sorry, that was for which library?
This is for the Montrose Branch Library. The consultant looked at Montrose and proposed the expansion that we listed here.
But the other alternative was if you built a new library.
If we built a new library.
So, this is the option of building a new library.
So, if we went to Rock Haven, right now, what's the asking price on that? Seven, eight million or something?
It's hard to know, Mr. Weaver, because at the time, many of us last looked at it, the market had not gone soft. On top of that, there are issues there in terms of use, in terms of the, you know, in terms of the mature oaks and the historic preservation issues, infrastructure demands for schools and so on. It's unclear. The other point is that the, a new use of that Lot 8 in itself could generate income.
It'd be a land swamp.
Councilmember Quintero.
Yeah. I like the idea of looking at another location, and especially the Rock Haven site, because I think geographically, it's going to absolutely serve more clients by moving it a few blocks west. I think the only other library around is the LA County.
That's correct. You know, just on a first blush impression of the site, moving it up in that direction, it's a beautiful location, don't get me wrong. It does bring us a bit closer to the La Chrissena Branch Library, which is a county library. They are in the process, it's my understanding, of expanding that branch library, and that the groundbreaking for that will occur, I think it's later this month. So, I have had questions before, you know, why do we have two libraries, public libraries, that are relatively close to each other? That question may arise. The reality is that Montrose, regardless of that issue, Montrose is our busiest branch library. I don't, I haven't been inside the gate at Rock Haven, and so it's difficult for me to give any sort of assessment of how it would be as a public library. I have a sense it might be expensive, but I'd have to take a look.
Mr. Starbuck.
It seems to me that within the timeframe and context of this CIP, what we're hearing from the council is very large question marks relative to any specific plan for both Casa Verdugo, as well as the Montrose Fire Station Library, and a need for a great deal more detail and workup on both of those, because you won't be able to arrive at a conclusion within the timeframe of this CIP. So, in all likelihood, we'll need to anticipate in this CIP some big hold stamps on these projects, so we can bring you back much more detail about all these options that have been discussed, including a complete workup on this concept of moving in a different direction on Montrose, both with respect to fire station as well as library, and need to bring you back a great deal more detail. Certainly, if we're going to move in a direction of potentially looking at acquiring the Rock Haven site and getting some sense as to the economics of that, and, because I don't think any, at least, I don't think any of us have been on the site, it certainly appears from...
I certainly hope not as a patient.
Yeah, well, one can, we may, I may be heading there quickly, but what we can see from the streets, certainly, you know, one sees a lot of facilities with a lot of potential, but whether or not an adaptive reuse for a library is something you could use with existing structures, you need to build something new, we don't have any idea. But I can certainly anticipate, within the timeframe we have to put the CIP to bed in a preliminary form, the need to put a big hold on a number of the items, fire stations, libraries that are in this addition, and bring you back a great deal more detail evaluating these options before we proceed with anything.
Councilmember Yusefian.
So, I share. I agree with Mr. Starbuck, and also, I agree with two of my colleagues. I think, I think looking at that site is a good idea. Nevertheless, I think it's a good idea for us to put the money aside and schedule this money as we have been doing, because regardless of wherever you go, if I look at the totals, you have $5.5 million, it's not enough.
Not enough, no.
So, no matter whether you stay existing location, go somewhere else, move over there, with the exception of doing absolutely nothing, you're short of money. So, putting these amounts aside, I think it's a good idea. If there's ways for us to put a little bit more somewhere down the line, that would be even better. But I do agree that we need to maybe put aside a day so we can discuss the issue of the library, and put another day aside so we can discuss the issue of the fire station. So, we dedicate it only to that, so then staff will know what they need to do for the, in the future. But nevertheless, for the purpose of today, I think it's obvious that we need to put this money aside for both cases. On the issue of renovating existing libraries, I am assuming this money that you're using has nothing to do with any of these three branches, right?
That's correct.
Is it just regular maintenance?
As you'll, as you may recall, there was a major leak at the, just as an example, at the Montrose Branch Library, and it required a new roof. There was some significant damage to the walls and to the bookshelves and some of the furniture. That's an example of how we used the money to provide...
You have $1.4 million left over.
That's correct.
What are you using that for?
Some examples of projects. I could give you a list that's probably twice that long, but some examples are, the Grandview Branch Library needs some landscaping. The central library, main floor, the furniture is probably 15 years old, and for a number of reasons, it needs to be cleaned frequently and wears out much more rapidly. There's a number of other things.
Have we already recarpeted the main library and all that stuff?
Yes, thankfully.
So, that has been done, okay. Speaking of the main library, as part of what this council, previous council adopted, there was supposed to be a section dedicated to the Mans in Humanity to Man. Was that area ever created?
Yes, there, we have a section of the area, an area of the central library that's dedicated to the genocide memorial collection of materials, which is a sort of combination of materials that the library has purchased and made available, as well as materials that were donated from the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if you'll let me just sort of catch up again here on the PowerPoints, I wanted to talk just a few minutes about the Brand Library and Art Center. The Brand Mansion was built in 1904. The mansion itself, which is the portion that you see in the photograph, is approximately 5,000 square feet. It was opened in 1956 as an art and music library, and it was remodeled and expanded by about 21,000 square feet in 1969. Part of that was to provide the art gallery and the recital hall in the library, as well as the art studio that Parks has. To give you some idea of usage there, approximately 136,000 items were borrowed from there in 2005, '06, and about 170,000 people walked through the door. Again, these could be duplicated people. The Brand Library and Art Center was not included in our service area assessment that I discussed earlier, because we had already done a great deal of work on Brand prior to that, and we didn't feel we needed to do more work. So, the needs for Brand were identified through a master plan, and also, we worked with the Getty on a historic structures report. The basic needs that were identified were ADA accessibility. It's a major challenge in large part, due in large part to the fact that the building is old, and the topography of that site is challenging. The building is in need of a seismic retrofit, both in terms of life safety, but additionally, Brand could arguably be considered the most recognizable building in the city, and if there were a major earthquake, we're not sure that the building would survive. There's needs for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, which is apparently referred to as MEP, and there's some need to do some basic space improvement to make the public space more efficient. The aisles are not ADA compliant. The carpet and the paint and all that, for the most part, hasn't been touched since '69. Council kindly approved about $3.8 million already, so you will see that on your small spreadsheet. Unfortunately, we have worked through the numbers, and the $3.8 million will not get us even through ADA compliance and a seismic retrofit, let alone the other, the other items that are listed. So, there is an unfunded request on your small spreadsheet for an additional $4 million to provide full ADA compliance, seismic retrofit, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and some minimal interior and exterior improvements. These funds would not cover the full historic restoration or rehabilitation of Brand. As some of you may know, when Brand was converted to a library in the '50s, and again, when it was touched in the '60s, people were perhaps not as sensitive to the historic nature of buildings, and so things were covered over or taken out that we might not cover over or take out today. We have applied for a California Cultural and Historic Endowment Fund grant from the state of California to provide some historic restoration on the site, and we're hopeful that we will get that grant.
How much?
$2 million.
Have we tried any money from Parks, since it's in Brand Park?
Parks and Recreation?
No, no, no. No, no, no. From Park Bonds?
Oh, from Park Bonds?
For restoration, because this is in Brand Park.
Um, you know, Parks would have to speak to that issue, or actually Cindy Cleary, Assistant Director, can speak to this issue. Cindy Cleary, Assistant Director of Libraries. The CCHE funding is part of a Park Bond, and also, there's some Park Bond funding that's coming up, hopefully in the next one to four years, that we will be able to apply for additional funding, hopefully if it-
Yeah, because generally, there, there's a lot more Park Bonds get approved. The last library bond that was out there, the taxpayers basically voted against it. So, I guess they like to be more happy and-
Right.
Not know much about things.
And, yeah, unfortunately.
I don't know what their logic is, but since the Park Bonds are there, and since this is in Brand Park, I thought maybe you can piggyback on that.
Yeah.
How much do you think we can take money from the Park Bonds on this?
Uh, yeah, it's too soon to tell. We're working with the state lobbyists on that, to kind of project out to the future, but, but I don't think they're clear in terms of-
Have we also tried that before?
Other than CCHE, no.
No, we haven't, okay.
You know, if I may, Councilman Yusefian, we've looked at some of the bonds, Prop 84, I'm not sure there is a lot of money for a library, but we can certainly look at it.
Well, can we use some of that money for exterior at least? Or, or, or not for the library purposes, but it was a building, that whole park is part of Brand's, you know, estate, and when he donated to us to be used for the public. So, at least the building itself, or the retrofitting of the building, I mean, we are using some park fees to do the, up in Duque majin Park, to do the, the barn. So, may, I mean, that, that's what I'm thinking, is there's a way to massage that grant to get some money for the structure itself, not what's inside the structure.
Right, just clarification on the Duque majin barn, that's not really bond money, that's Santa Monica Conservancy money. But, we can, certainly can look at it, I know that it's very competitive.
Renovation of the barn?
Yes.
Is it Santa Monica Conservancy money?
Right, there's a million dollars in the Conservancy.
There's a commitment from them.
But, we certainly can look at it, I know it's very competitive at this point, we're trying to work with the lobbies to see if we can have a per capita component to it, that way it brings guaranteed money in, but I'm not sure it's going to look that way at this point. But, we certainly can work with the library to do that, to look for more money.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on. A few other CIP requests, we've already sort of been through the renovating existing libraries money, what they're used for. Additionally, we have a $850,000 request on the unfunded list.
Wait a second. You have a $1.4 million in the renovation part of the libraries. You're going to add another 4.0, I mean, $450,000 for this year. Since that $1.4 is not encumbered, you're not using it, I mean, there's few things here and there, why not take like a million dollars of that and put it forward, uh, Brand Library? I mean, it, it is not going to do us any good to wait for, until an earthquake hits, library is destroyed, and then we go, gee whiz, you know, we should have done it and we didn't do it. I, I, I watched the library, I go there very often, and it really is a sad shape.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it is, it is an iconic building, it is an icon for the city, so, can we take, how much would it take to just retrofit it?
Uh, to just ret, do the seismic retrofit? Wow, let's take a look. Um, let's see, and I may need somehow from Mr. Zern here, but um-
It shows $4 million, is that what it is?
No, just for the seismic retrofit, we're looking at-
One point three?
1.3 million for the basic seismic retrofit. In that retrofit, it assumes that we would attempt to save the mansion portion-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, structurally, as well as life safety.
Right.
But, it would provide life safety for the remainder of the building, if that makes sense.
Which was the additions?
For the addition, the 1969 addition.
So, if you have a major earthquake, the people would be able to get out safely, but you might have enough significant damage to the building, you'd have to tear it down.
Mansion?
No, no, no. So, the thought was, you secure the mansion, so the building would be secured. The addition that was done in fif-
'69.
In '69, you'd only do that upgrade to life safety, not to preserve the building. So, you might lose the building in a major earthquake, people would get out safely, but you might have so much damage, you have to tear it down.
And, and are you moving forward, because you got 3.3 million, 3.7 million dollars there? Are we moving forward with that?
Yes, we're, what we're going to do is, is move forward with-
Retrofit.
With hiring an architect to look at the building.
And when did we give you that 3.7 million?
Uh, it was a few years ago. As you'll recall, we, we brought a, an RFP to council some months back, and there was a request at that point, because of the, the contractor we had selected, the architect we had selected, to kind of go back and, and do the process again, get some more information. So, we have done that, and we're going to be bringing you a, a request to go out to bid.
Okay.
What we're recommending at the very minimum is that we do the, the seismic, basic seismic, as we've discussed, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and then ADA. Those three things combined, at this point, we're looking at at least 4.3 million, so even with the 3.8, we're under.
500,000.
Yes. We had looked at using some of the, the renovating existing libraries money to provide some new furnishings at the site, that sort of thing.
Let's, let's save the site first, before you worry about the furniture.
Right.
All right.
When, I have a question. Councilmember Prinschel. At the end of the, of all of the upgrades, the square footage obviously remains the same, is there any thought to re, reconfiguring any of the space, or is it strictly going to be the same? I mean, you're doing a major workover, that's what I'm curious about, whether-
Right. From, from my perspective, as, as Director of Libraries, bringing my expertise forward, part of the $4 million extra are hopeless to actually do some things in the public area, to make it evident that some upgrading was done. We are proposing with the $4 million to do some minimal interior and exterior, new carpet and paint. You know, we, we've gone to CDs instead of records, and so adapting to that change. Also, when the staffing was set up, or when the staff areas were set up in that library, staff is essentially spread throughout the building, it's a very inefficient staff model, and we'd like to be able to look at having a centralized desk, so that people have one, maybe two places to go, instead of four or five, we can work with fewer staff members, but it's very difficult with the building as it is, since there are no lines of sight between staff members, to know whether you need someone at the back, or you don't, you know, that sort of thing. So, the interior improvements would help to provide that centralized staffing, the lines of sight, do some, some minimal interior and exterior improvements, and I don't-
Okay, so, just to be clear then, when we do the retrofits, as a result of doing that, you're also going to be reconfiguring the library, is the way I would look at it? Reconfiguring it, so that you have some of those efficiencies, a more modern type of approach to the Brand Library?
Um, well, let's see if I can, if I can run it through. If we were given about 4.3 total, we have 3.8, if we were given 4.3, we would able, be able to do sort of the backbone work, so the seismic, the mechanical, electrical, and the ADA. There would not be a lot of changes, as far as the public is concerned, but the building would be saved in case of an earthquake, and the systems that are quite old would be replaced.
But, there'd be no reconfiguration or efficiency upgrades to the interior of the library? And there'd be no significant restoration at all?
This is correct.
Okay, so then- And in other words, you'd have no expanded gallery, or anything like that?
Right. So, a half a million dollars gets you that, but doesn't get to where you're suggesting you'd like to go?
Okay, well, from my, from my perspective, if we're going to spend that kind of money to do these improvements, then we should go ahead and make it a more updated library. I mean, I just don't see to go back to this archaic design that you're talking about. Let's go ahead and spend a few more dollars, and let's make it a more efficient and updated type of flow within the library.
I would like to add something to that. What is the, the thinking or the philosophy about, I mean, Brand is our, our music and arts facility, but our Glendale history, our special collections area, is at the Central Library.
That's correct.
And, and since I never get to say this, like Mr. Weaver gets to refer to himself as an engineer, because it, it fits in so often, so this is my one chance probably ever, I'll get to say, since I am a photographic preservationist, I am concerned about our special collection.
That's right.
It's the history of our city, both photographically and otherwise, and it's spread about all over the city, and even in some of our, our buildings right here at City Hall, and basements, and file drawers, and, and so on, not to mention the photographic collections at the, at the library, Central Library, which are not readily available to the public, as much as I'd like to see them be. They are available, but, but on a limited basis, and they're not in, they're not in the best shape. They are deteriorating, to put it mildly. We are losing our own history. Is there a reason that we don't think about, perhaps, combining those collections at Brand, since it is already a, our, our arts and, and culture, our arts and music library to, since we are going to do a renovation there?
We could certainly look at doing that. I mean, as the Director of Libraries, I'd argue that all of our libraries are cultural centers. I think that, that there has been some work done at Central on some climate control, and, you know, facilities and that sort of thing. I'm not saying that it's, it's adequate to preserve our entire collection, but there has been some work done there. It is the Central Library, so theoretically, it's, it's a little bit more accessible than Brand, but we can certainly look at relocating the collection there, and we need to look at, at where we would put it. But, if we're engaging an architect, we could certainly have them include that as part of the-
Let me, let me just explain partly what my concern is. Even if you have a climate-controlled facility at the Central Library, if you have our collection of historic negatives in a metal box, it, it doesn't matter what climate it's in, one whiff tells you they're going away. Not only that, I had the opportunity to take a little tour of some of our basement areas here, and for example, the first resolution ever passed by the city council, the actual original document is just sitting in a folder in a metal file drawer in a basement. And Mr. Howard, you might be interested to know that the first resolution passed by the first city council was to hire the city attorney, so, so, you see, not much has changed in, in 100 years, or the first, first thing is to get the attorney on board. But, in any case, this is all part of our history, and it, and, and it would be nice to bring it under one roof, where the public can have access to it. Anyway, I, I just wonder if this wouldn't be the right time to at least find out about-
Sure, we can certainly take a look at it.
And, and Mr. Mayor Protem, the other thing is, Brand Library also holds maybe the largest collection of sheet music. I don't think there's anywhere else, I think it's in Western United States, it's probably one of the largest sheet music holders, since my wife happens to be a music editor and music person. It, it is a collection that people come from all over to get ahold of. Unfortunately, a lot of the stuff ends up being in exactly what you said, in metal boxes, somewhere it's put in there, and stored in there, because we're just trying to cram too many things in one little, small thing. People also donate a lot of stuff to the city library system. That is why I think Brand Library that has a lot more, how many people go to Brand Library?
Uh, it's over 100,000 people that go through the gate.
Okay.
I'm sure some of those are duplicated.
100,000 people go to Brand Library, and, and we're still sitting in here, talking about what we should do, while we are planning to spend $12 million on Casa, whatever, Verdugo, that has only about 13,000 people going through, or whatever. I, I think we need to save that. So, my, my suggestion will be, is for staff to come back to us, figure out something, let's take some money out of someplace and save this, because I remember, before we even built the, the Pacific Edison, there was $6 million that was dedicated to redoing Brand Library. When we went through the whole study, and we decided to build that joint facility with the school, we took money out of the Brand Library, we took the $6 million out of there, and Sheldon Baker at the time, he basically did it, even though he was not happy, but that's what needed to be done at the time. And, there was commitments made at that time, that that money will be replaced. Now, we've put some of it back, but not enough. But, I don't want to wait until that building is gone, before we say, gee whiz, it's gone. So, I think we should spend the money, I agree with Mr. Quintero, we should do what is necessary, let's fix the one we have, and then we'll move on to some new ones somewhere down the line. Let's not lose this one, and then, bird in a hand is better than two in a bush, as they say. And those two are still in the bush.
Very good.
Well, with that interesting analogy-
Yes.
-Erna Freyse, and Mr. Starbuck.
Well, I just, I want to get a sense of, of what we need to bring back here, and, Nancy, maybe you can help with the big pieces. The 3.78 that we have, we've talked about an additional half a million dollars to do the complete seismic ADA compliance retrofits, but that gets us nothing else.
That's correct.
Does that presume then, another three and a half million gets the, the unfunded request dot, which really doesn't do a full interior, exterior restoration? Because your last dot says that, that if, if you had 7.78 million dollars, you would not get full historic restoration or rehabilitation.
This is correct. Let me try to draw a distinction between historic preservation and historic restoration. And, I guess what we're talking about, obviously, it's a historic building, as we do work there, we're going to have to do preservation to maintain the integrity of the building. So, preservation will happen through the process, just as, as, as normal course of business. Historic restoration talks about restoring the building to the state as close as we can, you know, make it when it was originally constructed. So, for example, there was a fireplace that was part of the Brand Mansion, that was covered over, I believe, in '54, '56, I'm sorry, when the building was converted to a library. We believe, working with the Getty, that the fireplace is actually there, it's just behind the wall, and so, being able to go in there and restore what's there, that would be the, the historic restoration, that we're hoping-
But, you will have to do that, since that was probably made out of brick and unreinforced masonry, if it was built prior to 1933, which this was, you probably will have to open that up in order to retrofit it, so you will deal with that anyway.
Uh-
You're going to have to risk, you're going to have to retrofit that chimney, I guarantee you, as I'm sitting here.
And I, you know, I-
I've worked enough buildings, I know, this was built prior to 1933.
That's why we'd hire an architect to go and find out what we need to do.
On a contractor, or an architect.
But, what is it going to take to do what Mr. Quintero was saying, which is, to give you, maybe not complete restoration, but to give you what you need for your library facilities to, to work? Line of sight, or, I mean, line of sight can also be done differently, with high-tech, little miniature cameras, you can almost see everything nowadays days, you don't actually have to physically see a person. But, how, what it would take to do what he was?
Well, let me-
Have a breakdown of that?
Well, let me suggest, we need to bring you back several pieces, because we're also hearing something else, which is the possibility of looking at how we might consolidate special collections in the Brand Library as well, and, and I don't think Nancy's thought about those space implications. So, I think we need to bring you back more detailed numbers, that would look at a number of different levels of improvement at Brand Library. The basic, probably three or four different levels. The basic, the dot number two there, the dot number four, that goes, that probably has a couple different levels to it, which could be the improvement of the interior space, if we weren't going to consolidate operations, and then, under what circumstances, and how might you consolidate operations, and kind of what's the price tag attached to that? And then, the full historic restoration rehabilitation number, which could go beyond all of that, to even do restoration. I, I suspect what you're going to find out is, you probably can't afford to go to the full historic restoration, but you- but you can then pick and choose where you want to end up in between all of those. And we probably need to, rather than have you respond off of what you have, Nancy, I think we just need to pull those numbers together and bring them back to you so you can see the full scale.
Do you want to come back to us during the, the library discussion?
I think we should. I mean, we can, we can probably pull numbers and do a better job of presenting that to you next week as we wrap up the CIP.
We're very close. So that's a good idea. We're very close. So we could, we can bring that in.
Otherwise, we'll get numbers flying around that especially with this collections consolidation. I know Nancy hasn't given that any thought.
Yes, if I could just talk just briefly about special collections. Some of you may have been in our special collections room in the Central Library, and I just want to say that that's only maybe a third of the space that's actually dedicated to special collections. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes space. So we're more than happy to look at it and make a recommendation. It's just a substantial.
I would appreciate that, for one. I'm sure my colleagues agree. But even so, to me, that's even more, if only a third of it is readily available to the public, that's all the more reason to take a look at it, whether it be at Brand or even, even some other.
Park Haven. I mean, you could, you could, you could also divide them. You could have photographs in one place.
I'm gonna take a Lasso and a, a Protem Lasso and try to reel this all back. It's partly my own fault, I realize.
All right. If I can just finish out here, there is a request for about $850,000. It's an unfunded request for the Central Library to try to integrate the Central Library with the ARC and Central Park Americana and the Marketplace. As, as council knows, there, there is a passageway that comes from the Americana over to the ARC Central Library. Currently, that ends in our mechanical electrical building. We may want to do something with that. There's also been some discussion about perhaps reorienting the entrance of the Central Library, since it does not face the ARC, Central Park, Americana, or Marketplace. And so the $850,000, which is unfunded, would help us, you know, look at those things and, and carry forth some recommendations.
Yes, Mr.?
Mayor Protem, I, I think we did discuss the issue of reorientation of that entryway. I think we decided to leave it just the way it is, because there were some different designs that was given to us during the ARC discussion. Now, my question to City Manager is, why does the library have to pay for the change on the electrical room, since it's a redevelopment thing? Can redevelopment deal with that issue?
The, the source of funding, I think, is a question you've raised. Whether it's categorized as a library improvement in conjunction with this project or something else is, is all just a matter of process and structure.
Is, is, is the library in the redevelopment area or not?
Yes. And in fact, and again, you're, you're getting to source of funds. It's potential, for example, that the redevelopment agency could even pay for this work, but it's still a library project.
Okay, I see.
See what I'm saying?
Just a clarification. The, it is actually outside the redevelopment project area, but it's right on the boundary, and you could almost certainly make the, the benefit findings, that it benefits the project area.
And we've anticipated that if indeed you want to use redevelopment funds, it wouldn't be hard to justify the use for the finding that it benefits the project area, because it is literally right there on the border and is connected to the downtown. So this, this just gets to where do we, where do we place this project as we review it? It really doesn't get to the source of funding at all.
But that's in here.
No, but that's in there, yeah. It's an unfunded project.
Correct. So the last sheet really summarizes all that we've talked about in tabular format. The, the blue items are on the recommended or they've been funded, and the yellow items are on the unfunded list. With that, I'm happy to answer, answer any other questions.
Want to see any? So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, as, before we, before we leave libraries, then a lot of follow-up on libraries, the whole question of Montrose Library, Rockhaven, that whole discussion obviously needs to have a great deal more evaluation done to it. We need to come back to you with more detailed numbers on the whole Brand discussion we had, those different levels of improvement, including the question of, of how there could be a stronger connection, if not complete consolidation, of the special collections and what all of that means.
And a funding strategy.
No, no. I think, I think, yeah, I think when you see it, you can tell us whether you want to go the next step to a funding strategy, which would mean, how do we get the dollars, once you tell us what level you'd like to try and, and get to. I will tell you what's happening, I'm sure what you'll see when we recap the CIP, is in the first three years is your most critical time for funding, because everything, everything is, is trying to get done in the first three years. As you get further out and are willing to schedule some of these further out, there's a great deal more flexibility in the CIP. But the needs will always exceed the amount of resources available. Okay, so we're ready to move on to the next?
Right. Mr. Mr. Starboard, may I ask that, that when this does come before us, either the fire stations or the libraries, that we segregate them in such a way that only the, the issues in which I have a conflict in are dealt with upfront and segregated and bifurcated from the rest of the discussion. I have a lot of things I wanted to say, and I think my colleagues were deprived, unfairly deprived of my comments, that I would like to, to make at the appropriate time when no conflict.
Wasn't deprived. Just kidding.
Perhaps you meant depraved on that.
And so let's just do, I know we, maybe it slipped under the radar, but let's do that next time, so I don't have this conflict issue.
But we're going to have to talk to the city attorney about how, how we can do that. Scott and I had a conversation briefly, and it's not an easy thing to do when you're on the broad topic of libraries or broad topic of fire stations, even though we may try to compartmentalize the specific site that you have a conflict with. As the attorney has pointed out, all these funds at some end interrelate, because you're making priorities on the allocation of resources. So we may be able to do that. We're going to have to give more thought to how we do that, so you can participate in those other discussions that aren't related to the specific site on which you have a conflict. That's the challenge.
As Mr. Starboard indicated, it's more difficult with these broader-ranging discussions to be able to segregate and conclude a decision on those at this point in time. Certainly when the budget is brought before you, I think we're going to have a much easier time of being able to segment or, and or segregate that opportunity that you were.
And we will look, we will, we will look actively at how we can do that, so we can preserve your ability to participate in the discussion.
I mean, these are pretty important issues. We're talking about tens of millions of dollars, and I really would like to.
I agree.
Discuss the issues that, that I would be able to discuss were it not for a conflict. And I'll leave that up to Mr. Howard, too.
Yeah, we'll discuss that. There, there may be a way to bring the one parcel to a conclusion that the council can make, and then that would free up the ability to discuss all of the others.
Okay.
We'll talk about that.
All right. We're going to try and go as close to noon as possible, and those watching, we are going to reconvene this session at 1:00, so we can get through as much as of the, the study session and the CIP budget as possible. And let's go to the next item, please.
The next item are what we call our general government projects. We have four items here. First two deal with information services, our radio site, power systems, and our city services interface.
Hello, Mayor Nigerian, members of the council. Let me just give you some context and, for these two projects. The CSI project, city services interface, I don't know if you recall, back in April of this year, we brought a request for you to approve, approve moving forward with the implementation of a system that would allow various city departments to have access, well, to store and have access to data related to permits and land-related transactions. These, first, the city services interface, $60,000 request for 2007/8 is part of that larger request that we submitted to you back in April and you approved.
How much was that?
That was 1.130.
And that's all spent?
That's a contingency fee of 10%.
And that's already spent?
No, we are, we are progressing along the first phase of the project, which is scheduled to, to be concluded in the first week of July. We provided, you requested that we provided quarterly reports. We provided the first one at the conclusion of the first quarter, whatever that was. And the second one is going to be right when we go live.
So, Mr. Aller, why, why isn't there any money in this existing balance section?
Probably because we just appropriated the money back in April, and it wasn't showing on the reports.
Oh, okay. So there was a 1.8 there?
There was no appropriation prior to April.
1.1.
1.1?
Yeah. And I don't know how you include the contingency fee. It may be part of that. In that case, it would be 1.2.
Okay, something like that. Okay.
Something like that. All right.
So the 60,000 is additional?
No, it's part of that request. It's just that it was spread over two years. The request was a two-year.
Oh, okay, so it's, okay.
And the next one, the, the radio site, power system upgrade is a conversion from 110 volts to 48 volts, plus generator upgrades on multiple sites, radio sites. This is another multi-year request that it's already underway. And I don't know. You have any questions about it?
Does this serve our ISIS?
Yes, it's part of that. It's part of the radio communication system.
This would be all of our remote, Mel, this is all of our remote sites, our repeaters and the likes.
You want to take those questions?
The generator?
I'll hand it over to Steve Vronix.
Actually, doesn't include a generator. It's just battery. Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may be aware we have remote radio sites on mountaintops. When we lose commercial power on those sites, we switch to generator. There is a minute or two lag by, by the time we have stable power from the generator. Because most of our equipment on the sites is computer-controlled, that very ungraceful shutdown in that minute or so causes problems on the sites. Often, we have to send technicians up to restart equipment, even after we've returned to commercial power. With these funds, we are either adding UPSs. We don't have space on San Augustine, for instance, for battery plants, so we put UPS up there for now. We're hoping to relocate the generator at a future time and add battery. The rest of the sites, we're adding battery plant, which will keep us running. Even if the generator doesn't start, gives us six to eight hours of reliable power on the sites. Certainly enough time that if the generator doesn't start, we can send someone up to service it and get it online. The, the generator upgrade portion is actually not included in these funds, and that's something we're going to be doing in a future year and coming back to you with, because we will need to upgrade the generators, especially with the additional equipment we've added to the sites. The generators at this point are just barely sufficient in capacity, and, and they're getting a little long in the tooth. So we'll want to come back and replace the generators in the future. But most importantly, we're trying to get all these sites onto reliable battery power as a backup at this point. And that's what this is, this project is.
What the $50,000 are?
Yes.
And how much, so each $50,000 is for one site?
Uh, no. We, the sites are around 75,000. 50,000 was for San Augustine to, to upgrade that. The total cost is 250,000. We're doing four sites, Mount Lee, Mount Lucans, San Augustine, and Mount Tom. Those are the ones that are most prone to the power failures.
Okay, so you got, you got total of 150 in here, if you need 250.
Right.
Where's the 100 coming?
Previous year. We already have Mount Lee completed. Mount Tom is almost finished.
So some of the work has been done.
This is the balance to complete.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Next on this.
GTV6 is next.
Robotics.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city began cable-casting meetings and creating programming in 1995. Since that time, as you can imagine, the city has accumulated a lot of videotapes in our basement where our control room is located. Staff is estimating that we have about 2,400 videotapes of meetings and programs. In 2005, we did start transitioning into a DVD format. However, between that period of 1995 and 2005, we've accumulated a considerable amount of videotapes. Videotapes, as you know, have a very short life expectancy, and we want to take some preventative measures to make sure that we keep those tapes, so they are basically our public record. And we are wanting to duplicate them onto another format, which will, of course, give us more life expectancy. Staff is estimating that in order to do so, we would probably have to allocate about $80,000 to do that, and that's basically what we're asking for here.
Are you, are you doing this into a DVD? You're going from videotape to DVD, or you're going from videotape to what format you're going?
We're, we're watching the technology as we speak. Mr. Johansson, as you know, keeps up to speed on just about everything dealing with broadcast production. And one of the big battles going on right now, and you might be familiar with it, is the Blu-ray versus high-definition DVD. It's very similar to what happened years ago with the VHS and Beta tapes. This is happening now in a DVD format, so we're monitoring that to see how that goes, seeing who may, you know, come out, if you want to call it a victor in that area. Of course, there's, there's also hard drives. Some people may think going to a hard drive may be a better way to go. So we're monitoring the technology, and once we decide to go ahead and, and make the leap, then I'm sure Mr. Johansson's going to try to figure out what's best for the city.
And these are every single tape of every single commission and council meeting?
All, all the board and commission meetings, city council meetings, all the programs we've produced over the years, everything. We're estimating about 2,400 tapes.
Okay, very good. Any other questions on that?
The question is, do we need to save every single one of those? I mean, is it?
Well, years ago.
I understand city council is important. I understand planning commission is important, maybe even BZA, maybe, but, you know, those are, those are regulatory type of things. Do I really want to save design review? Do I want to really save arts and culture? Do I really want to save some of the other? I mean, that's a lot of money, and that's saving tapes, I understand, for a short period of time for your purposes, getting minutes and this and that. But what is it that you don't archive every single thing?
When we began broadcasting, a number of the different departments, including the city clerk, I believe, former city clerk Aileen Boyle, used to actually do an audio tape.
Right.
Of the city council meetings, housing authority, and redevelopment. Once we began broadcasting, all the departments, including the city clerk, began transitioning to videotape as our official public record. So that's one thing you may want to keep in mind when we are speaking of not only these meetings held in these chambers, but also over in Municipal Services Building 105.
Frank?
Yeah, for my, all issues pertaining to development, DRB, BZA, planning commission, et cetera, those I think should be kept, because they will be the official record 15 years from now, when someone is doing something on a property and there's some question as to what took place. Not that arts and culture isn't important, but the others are actually, to me, they're legal documents, maybe legal documents in any sense.
Mr. Starboard?
Yeah, that, that's something that we'll need to evaluate and bring back to you as they look at, at the archiving issues, but also keep in mind that we do take paper action minutes at commission meetings, city council meeting. That becomes, here, that becomes essentially the, the longest and most reliable historic documentation of it. Those the city clerk keeps. These have all the detail, but the action items are, are recorded as well on, on paper.
Well, but I'm not convinced that that's the most reliable.
I didn't say reli, I'm not sure I said reliable.
You did say reliable.
Did I say reliable?
And I don't mean for the, this particular city clerk, but just in general, transcripts are.
Oh.
Transcripts are, are different from, from video and, and audio.
Two minutes rebuttal, Mr. Kusak.
No.
We have the highest confidence in our staff and our abilities to retain records. But as Mr. Wells did mention, we do have a lot of tapes. It is housed, actually, a lot of them are housed downstairs in the basement. And it's just a matter of saving space, and it makes sense just to be able to do that. Libraries and other agencies are doing it all over the country, and I think it would be high time for us to start as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kusak. Okay, then if there's nothing else, thank you, Rich.
And we're replacing you, Rich, with Roboc? Is that what the $170,000 is?
For the robotics and the GPD?
Did you touch on that one?
Will someone address that?
No, you didn't want to talk about it.
Rich, the robotics project, the.
GPD, community room robotics.
Oh, okay. That is a, a proposal to essentially put robotic cameras over in the police community room, which would give us the ability to videotape meetings, press conferences, things of that nature, directly going down to our control room here in the City Hall basement instead of having to put, you know, bodies and TV cameras over in that room. It, it basically will simplify our efforts to videotape anything over there if we believe it's necessary.
How often do we use that room for videotaping purposes?
Uh, we have, in the past, I, I can think of CDBG meetings, the committee meetings were held over there. Now, they have been recently meeting here in the council. Now, they have been recently meeting here in the council chambers. But I know we've had a few requests from some of the different departments who do hold meetings over there to do some videotaping. It hasn't been frequent, but, but we have done some.
It's the sort of thing that if, if, if the, if it were there, it would be used more because we have such a demand for public meeting space here anymore. We even have commissions that bump into each other that want to have meeting space that can be filmed and played later. So it's the sort of thing, if you put it in, it'll be used.
So this room, Room one oh five, they have been all upgraded to new standards?
Yes, one oh five is complete, correct.
Okay, so all we need to do is one seventy.
This will give us a third facility.
That will give us.
To the police community room, correct.
All right. Thank you.
And this is all PEG money?
No, it is not.
Well, this is the general, this is the general CIP money. This isn't PEG money. There isn't any more PEG money.
No, our, our PEG money is kind of gone.
It's gone. Okay.
It lasted a while.
Okay, the next category, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next category, actually, what we just finished was what we call our capital improvement fund. So this is all of our general fund capital projects. The next page, page six of nineteen, which we already covered in, in last week's meeting, is our gas tax fund and all the street projects that are specifically funded from gas taxes that the, that the city receives from the state. What I'd like to do is refer us back to page one. And then we'll hop into our unfunded projects. Going back to page one of this document, page one of nineteen, we will, if I can draw your attention down to the bottom of the, of the page where it's titled Estimated Ending Fund Balance, you'll see that for fiscal year two thousand and seven, eight, next fiscal year, we'll have an estimated ending fund balance of fifty-two thousand, close enough to zero. And that slowly increases over time to sixteen point six million at the end of the ten years. We also have a to-be programmed in contingency, starting at one million dollars for two years. And then that also increases to three million. So at the end of ten years, you also have twenty-six million. So if you would add them together, sixteen point six and twenty-six million, you have forty-two point six million in available funding for existing projects, for new projects, for projects on our unfunded list, or for projects like we talked about this morning with libraries or Montrose or what have you. These are the available funds that can go for newer existing projects.
Mr. Starburg?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, something else we should draw your attention to as we, as we sort of do this recap and look at both opportunities as well as, as question marks on resources available. The GRA funding that's up in the resources side of the ledger, look further up on that same page that Ron's referencing, the ten point eight million, ten million, ten million. There you see add GRA funding. A big question mark remains on that, both with respect to the amount, the timing, and what it can be used for. There was an anticipation of this funding relating to the cost of Verdugo, for example. If that has, if that has.
Talk to him.
No, I know. I'm just giving a point. If that has a big hold on it, then the question arises relative to this, this funding availability and what it's used for. Redevelopment agency funding, you have to have a redevelopment purpose related, in this case, to the central project area. On the other hand, you can also make a choice to repay the current outstanding loan between the city and the agency, in which case this money would be unfettered. You could use it for anything you otherwise spend capital improvement money on. But of course, that would repay the loan sooner and would probably limit your ability then to collect it after the project area goes, ends, ends its life. And frankly, you're better off trying to preserve that loan until the project ends its life and then collect it afterwards and, and use the tax increment for purposes for which it has a redevelopment purpose. So we'll need to have more discussion about that fairly significant source of funds that's playing a huge role in creating.
Your forty-two million dollars.
Yeah, create, well, not so much the forty-two, but certainly supporting projects in years two thousand and eight through two thousand and eleven. And now, some of those projects may get pulled out. So we'll need to do, we'll need, I think, to do some more work on this page, that funding source, the projects that have a hold and a big question mark on them, to show the implications of that.
The one point two million is not part of that bond issue?
It is part of that.
It is. It's just, this, this was where the money was needed. We needed one point two that year, so that's all that was put in because we were anticipating design in oh seven, oh eight. So we only put in one point two million of the bond proceeds.
And where were you going to come in and ask for the thirty-two million then?
The thirty-two million.
Actually, the thirty-two million bond issue would probably issued sometime next year. So it'd be early two thousand and eight.
Right.
Is when we'd actually issue the bonds.
Right, so before the end of the oh seven, oh eight fiscal year.
Okay, so this money realistically not here yet?
Well, it has to, the money is not here, but frankly, its use as a funding source has to have a big question mark on it for more evaluation.
Virtual money, virtual cash.
Sorry to interrupt your room.
No, that's fine. So with that, I thought we would go next to what has been euphemistically called our short spreadsheet. Page one of four. This is all of our unfunded requests.
The community development, I think we can deal with that today. And the redevelopment, we're going to deal with it today?
You have, yeah, you do have your budget review for both of those.
We will, we will deal with those too. One thing, Public Works projects, we have a list of all the transit assistance and all this stuff. I want, one question. Where do we deal with some of the, some of the furniture replacements and stuff like that at the permit services? We talked about this as I had an opportunity to go pull permits there.
Right.
We need to have some new chairs and stuff like that.
That would be the, yeah, and, and Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, I think the planning department has some budgetary numbers that they've plugged in. We currently have somebody doing a space analysis. We've gotten together with Fire and Planning and looking at doing the entire first floor, trying to maximize the efficiency of the space on the entire first floor, which includes possibly taking out walls and reconfiguring offices.
I wasn't going that far.
Because we are so strapped for space.
When I went there, the chairs are in real bad shape.
We agree.
Okay.
We agree.
So somewhere down the line, that needs to be, that's the only thing I want.
We don't have anything in here to replace it at this time. We'll have to come up with a number.
Next is, we are going to go to our unfunded projects listing. It's a four-page spreadsheet that you have. And once again, this is a listing of, of the unfunded projects that we kind of know about. Some of these do not have numbers associated with them. They were just kind of put down as items to discuss without necessarily, again, not necessarily knowing the figures. So we have forty-two point six million that we could allocate. And these is, this is a listing of four pages of projects that they could go for. I will draw your attention to the bottom of page four and the far right-hand column. And you'll see that we have listed here sixty-one million so that we cannot theoretically fund everything that is listed here. Plus, there are a number of zero-dollar amounts here on projects that would increase this dollar amount as well. This could be very high.
And, and Mr. Mayor, this list shouldn't be taken as reflecting necessarily the entire need. For example, street resurfacing program. As Steve has pointed out, he would, if, if given his druthers, need at least twice the amount of gas tax to do an adequate job of funding his street reconstruction, street surfacing.
Correct.
So, so this request for five hundred thousand dollars a year is only an effort to relate another priority level to streets over and above the current gas tax and CIP funding available.
And it's five million a year?
Well, it's five hundred, it's five hundred thousand dollars a year here. Again, if, if you were to fully fund streets to get us to the seventy percent plus, you'd be five million dollars a year.
Correct.
So what we, our view was if we plug those kinds of numbers in, this just almost becomes an unrealistic exercise. So when we, when we come back and, and have to discuss some of these items at a later time, you're going to have to talk about, for example, do you want to allocate more funds to streets? And if so, how much do you want to allocate and when? This five hundred thousand dollars is not reflective of what Public Works will tell you is the entire need. It's just an additional supplemental amount.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, members of the council, if you add those three columns up there, you get one point five million. To get to that number for, to maintain our seventy to seventy-five percent, we'd need this to be five point five million dollars. Plus, just to throw something in, Mr. Yusefian brought up some of the, some of the mobility plan improvements for the downtown area. Let's say, for instance, it's not in here. Central Avenue, which is the main component of that from Wilson to Glen Oaks, that's twelve million dollars by itself, totally separate from this.
So where do we do that? Oh, wait a second. We, oh, we are. I, I didn't see.
I think, I think the answer to that is that, that, that's why the CIP, the ten-year CIP, needs to be frankly, an unfinished document because you don't want to allocate all the dollars. And you may end up with just a listing of needs for which you don't have a solution for yet. There could be additional funding opportunities, for example, for Central, depending on which projects come online, what their EIRs reflect with respect to traffic impacts, what you may be able to impose as mitigation measures on those projects.
Can the redevelopment agency pay for that because it's?
Redevelopment agency can. It's in the project area. But it can, sure.
So part of that thirty-two million, we can use.
Part of the thirty-two million, you could use redevelopment agency dollars as well, that's right.
Okay.
So I think, I think we're going to have to have a, a CIP that continues to be what the CIP is, which it really is an unfinished document that becomes an evolving strategy for how we address these items that float to the surface as the highest priority. What we need from you eventually is to tell us, okay, you know, these are the areas that which we think is the highest priority. Like, like the discussion about Bran Park or the discussion about the streets. If you tell us, you know, we want to see more emphasis there, or if it's soccer fields. We have nothing in here for soccer field development. If this council says high priority on soccer fields, then we have to go back and look at the available funding, the timing of it, and what we might be able to accomplish relative to soccer fields. Same with, with Central Avenue improvements. We need to go address that and develop a strategy for it. Those sorts of things are going to require by their very nature additional work because there may be revenue sources that we can't identify today, but that we'll need to and will need to be available before those projects can be started.
Mr. Yusefian?
Well, I agree with you. I, I think one thing in my mind, which is a priority, not just to me, also to the community, is that as we went through and we did the exercise with the public, the number one issue was traffic. That's one of the reasons we spent over a million dollars, we did our mobility study. I do not want to take that million dollars, do the study, and then put the study on the shelf and let it sit there. It needs to be implemented. In order for it to be implemented, we have to spend the money to put those strategies into place. So then, when the public is driving in the street can say, wow, this council spends a million dollars, do the study, and took the time and put the money to do the work. So there's an improvement in the mobility. So that's the number one thing to me. That's what the community wants at this point. That's the number one issue. And then from there, you go what the community wanted next, and next, and next, and next.
Mr. Starburg?
Well, but let, let's remember, all, all of those strategies weren't structural improvements. Think of the, the Beeline and the Buzz. A lot of it was programmatic so that we could improve the ability for people to move around downtown. In fact, probably the most limited area that we have is adjusting the streets and moving the lines around. Some of the most effective will be policies that you'll subsequently put into place. It could be the development of programs that will raise revenues. So you can put them into both programs as well as structural.
Parking.
I'm thinking of the transportation development district sorts of structures they talked about. How you support a buzz kind of shuttle system in the downtown area. Those things will probably have a more lasting and more significant impact than moving lines around on a street and trying to get an extra lane here and there because there's only so much you can possibly do. But all of those things need to be focused on and.
And they all take money. Every time Steve has to go and take a line out and put another line somewhere else.
It all takes money.
He doesn't do it for free. Somebody charges him, so.
Okay, should we move on?
I guess it's a long list of unfunded mandates.
Well, let me, let me ask you, for example, relative to streets and street resurfacing, you, you heard the presentation from Steve. You have a good sense as to the, to the existing gap. We've suggested here, and it's against unfunded, at least a million and a half dollars more a year. We should try and find a way of funding that for streets if we're going to at least try to keep up. Steve will tell you, he'd rather have more like five and a half million dollars a year. But this suggests try and find a way to squeeze out another million and a half dollars. Some feedback from council whether that's a high priority and we should try to get there. With everything else you know is, is demanding resources, is that something you want to try and address?
I am. And you have potholes. People are going to be calling you every five minutes, already complaining.
I mean, there's a lot of complaints out there in a lot of different departments and.
I know, there's lots of names.
But roads.
It's like that, what's that game? Whack-a-mole?
Whack-a-mole.
You take care of this problem.
That is life.
And you've got another one.
Pops ups.
You've been going to Chuck E. Cheese too long.
No, it is exactly what this is like.
But, but that's what it is. I mean, it's, it's your road infrastructure. We heard five million dollars, he needs more. Just to stay even, it's five million dollars. So one and a half million still not going to bring us.
And you're going to see on this list, a whole number of items that you're going to conclude are also very important. We should continue going through this, so we'll get, be able to get through all of it before noon. But I just turned the page to page two of four. And there's a couple of relatively small items there for parks, recreation, and community development housing. But there's a big one right there at four oh one dash one three, which is the Pacific Park Aquatics Facility. So we note here that, that we don't have funding included in the current CIP budget for what would be funding necessary to even now get us close. And this wouldn't, this wouldn't, George, George? George here? And this wouldn't get us there now based on our current estimates of costs?
No, it wouldn't, no.
We're looking at, we're looking at in the neighborhood of ten million dollars for Pacific Park Aquatics Facility. We currently have, how much set aside, George?
We currently have about two point eight million dollars set aside.
So.
Is this a, there's a difference between a Pacific Park pool.
And an aquatics.
And aquatic center.
Right, right.
This is which one?
Not an aquatic center, it's a pool.
This is the pool. So you want ten million dollars for a pool?
Yeah, and honestly, we went back and we had. It costs, as you saw, the Brand Library renovation alone was going to be up to eight million dollars. It, it costs money to do these things at this point because of the escalation in construction costs. It's not just the pool, it's the pool building, it's the shower facilities with it. It's tearing out the, the existing water play feature, relocating the playground because you have to do that as part of the playground. So it's not just digging a hole for the pool, it's, it's all of that in that project.
Who owns that land, George?
We, well, we do.
At Pacific Park?
Right.
It's ours?
It's our land.
And I see further down, we've got a community aquatics center. And has there been any consideration to combining those to save rather than two separate projects, combining them so we do get the efficiencies of, of scale? In terms of showers, you only have to build one set of showers, one set of pump equipment, one set of.
Right. I, I think it's, it's a policy decision. If, if the city council decides to build an aquatics facility, you probably don't need a pool at the Pacific site. But you do need about four to six acres for an aquatics facility between parking and, and the various pools that you would build. Now, we took a look at several of them. One is a Santa Clarita, and they built it on an eight-acre site. Three pools, it accommodates the entire community.
How much did they spend?
Well, they spent twelve and a half million dollars, but this was about seven, eight years ago. And they estimate at this point, they would have spent about twenty-two million in today's dollars.
And I've been to that center. It's a huge facility.
It's really nice, yeah.
Very nice.
I mean, that makes a lot more sense than just one small pool.
But the question is, can you ever get there?
Right.
Can you realistically ever get there?
Well, unless you dream, you know, you don't get, you don't get there. And I'm not sure if, if what we're hearing, that the site is the problem or the funding. I mean, if we continue to put some funds away and continue to get grants and whatever, I would hate to. What I would hate to do would be to secure the funding for a, a smaller complex that is not truly serving the entire community and forego the possibility of, of something larger that we could, that we could really be proud of. These are my thoughts on it. So my question is, is there any thought? Has there been any analysis of combining those uses? What sort of savings would there be with a larger site? One, single larger than having the small Pacific and then, you know, pie in the sky for.
Well, I know we, we as, as staff have talked about it. Well, I know we, we as staff have talked about it. Again, we have, we're looking at several different sites for potential aquatics facilities, just the enormity of the site, really. We have three or four sites, we're looking at they're public land, and three potential private sites. You, as a city council, gave us money to, to hire a consultant to do that.
Has he come back with a report yet?
He, he's looking at these sites right now, so he'll come back with a report, takes a look at the feasibility of it, you know, is it doable, is it not doable? One of the sites could be Freeway Site A. One of the other sites is potentially Paulson, which is right across from GCC, it's, it's a piece of parcel. And you may say, well, that, that just won't work for us. But we have thought of all that, it's just money. It's, it's going to be 22 to 25 million in today's dollars. Potentially, Pacific Park is more doable, the land is there, it's, it's half the price, but a, a bigger aquatics facility will serve more people with more amenities.
I personally think if you're spending more than 6 million or 5 million dollars on Pacific Park as a pool, you're getting ripped.
Well, Councilman Esafian-
I can tell you, I don't know who you've been talking to.
We-
I'm telling you, everybody who has a pool, raise your hand in your house. You spend between, it used to be 30 to 35,000 dollars, that was a pool in a jacuzzi with the heater and all that stuff, about six years ago. With all the escalation, with all the plaster cost increase, the rebar increase and everything else, let's assume 100,000, I am yet to see a 100,000 dollar pool in a residential. 10 times the size of 100,000, that's a million dollars, okay? You're talking 10 million dollars. We, Pacific Pool, I didn't anticipate, are you guys anticipating a pool that is Olympic size?
This isn't.
Stuff like that?
This isn't Olympic size, this is very-
25 yards, five wide-
25 yard, only five feet deep. What are we using to build this thing?
Oh, Mr. Starbird.
Yeah, just to give you some sense as, because frankly, we, we all wish the numbers were smaller, I mean, believe me. But as an example, 17 years ago in the city I was then in, we reconstructed an existing high school pool. Land was all there, deck was all there, we tore off the existing pool, we reconstructed, we had to replace all of the equipment, and we had a little tiny postage stamp administrative offices where there weren't showers and you couldn't get a locker, you passed your clothes through a window in a nylon bag and they hung it on a, on a little rotation rack. That was almost $700,000, almost 20 years ago for that. It is amazing what these systems cost. You will be surprised. We, we wish the estimate would come in at 5 million dollars, but we can't fool ourselves.
But look, I'm looking at a basic sort of neighborhood, neighborhood pool like was there originally that never should have come out of the ground, but that's another story. Anyway, I don't, I mean, we're talking about showering facilities, why? I, I don't see that as being what we're, I mean, we may need bathroom facilities, obviously.
Bathroom facilities, you do need showers whether they're outdoors or indoors because it's, it's a health issue, really.
I mean, it's required?
Yeah.
Well, in that case, an outdoor shower-
There are different ways to approach that.
Would work for me. So, I mean, I'm looking for a budget, a budget pool, but something that literally, you know, all of South Glendale can go there and swim a little bit, take their kids, et cetera. If it's long enough, conceivably, you could even do some laps, somewhat shortened, but still laps.
Right, and quite honestly, I mean, I was shocked by it. We had two different companies look at the cost, are these costs realistic in today's dollars? And these are people who do this-
Is that what it's on?
No, no, that's not what it's on. Uh, that's a more elaborate pool.
Coco, do we have the other design?
It's just basically a, it's a 25 by 25.
Yeah, let me suggest, we're getting back into design again. The key issue here is, even if you wanted to build a relatively small neighborhood pool, you don't have enough money in the budget for that. Two and a half million dollars is not going to do that. If, if, if your desire is, you know what, bring this thing in, we're going to have a budget of 5 to 6 million dollars, and bring it in at that and show us what you can get us for that, then we still need to find a place for 2 to 3 million more dollars to even do that.
George, I guess my point is, we are getting a little bit off on this, but please bring that report to us and to the extent it might address one of the items, the community aquatics center, perhaps we can have some discussion on that as we set our sights on all these other things that are on our need list. And there's tons of them, I mean, tons of them. This is just one small thing. Soccer fields, mini parks, we've been through the libraries, City Hall renovation.
Well, I see, I, I hear on this item, irrespective of what it is, we need to be allocating more money sooner if we're ever going to get to even a neighborhood pool at Pacific Park.
Well, we put 1.2 million last year from CDBG.
Yeah, we have a total of how much, George?
2.8.
2.8 million dollars.
We could do another 1.2 again this year from CDBG. That will, that will bring it to 5 million. I think you should go out there and say, I'm looking to build a pool for 5 million with, with showers. It doesn't need to be inside, can be outside, bathroom facilities of people can change. Because I remember what that pool used to be. It was a, it was a pool, people went there and they taught their kids to swing, yeah.
It wasn't elaborate.
You know, it was not an elaborate thing. We're not asking for an elaborate thing. We have a tendency sometimes, when we sit down and we work on things, we just throw more and more things into it, and that's what Pacific Park has turned out to be. It has all these water features, this, that, and all this stuff, and most of the time, most of the things break down, they don't work because they get too sophisticated. It's time to go back to basics, just a basic pool, people get in and swim, get out.
Perhaps the report will address some of those issues, and let's, let's discuss it at that time.
Right, we'll bring back a report, very minimalist, you know? Again, you have to remember, to put something there, you have to remove the current play equipment and the playground, relocate the playground somewhere else because the kids do need a playground. So, there's some costs associated with that, but we'll bring back a report sooner than later, really. Uh, we'll get the staff going on it and bring you back a very minimalist, outdoor showers, whatever it may be.
Mr. Starbird?
Well, the, again, under any circumstance, we will need to find more funding, and even if it's a scenario where you tell us, you've got 5 million dollars, go tell us what you can build for 5 million, we will still need 1.2 million dollars more. Now, we could, we could, we can bring you back an option of looking at CDBG and having a pre-allocation of that out of next, next year's likely, one point, yeah, CDBG allocation. If that's your wish, we can, we can outline a number of scenarios that would also include 1.2 or more million dollars out of a subsequent year. Unless, unless we free up something, which indeed, we might free up some, some resources on the question of libraries and fire stations, the first three years of the CIP is pretty impacted. You begin to get to some additional resources in the '09, '10 year, but then you go back underwater because of the anticipated projects that are online in the following year of '10, '11. However, you've got to be programmed contingency funds, by the time you get to '09, '10, you've got about 4 million dollars in to-be-programmed money that hasn't been earmarked. So, you do have some options.
And if I just may add, you know, in prior years, I think all you used to get were construction dollars, and all the soft costs later on were added on, and this is just realistic. My, what I told staff is, we need to be upfront with council about all the costs, soft costs, design costs, everything's upfront, so you don't, you're not surprised later on by, oh my God, we need another 2, 3 million dollars, as you're already in the project. And I didn't want to do that. I mean, you, you should know what it is now and make, base your decision on the entire cost of it.
I know your predecessor did that, but I know you don't do that.
I, I don't want to do that to you.
Honestly. All I'm saying is, just-
I hear you. I want to bring it in as well.
Let's say it again. Question, Montrose Shopping Park Landscape, what is that? Is that what you do?
That's, that's, right, that's what we do, there's a need to-
And what is this for? This is, this is to replace the landscaping that we took out when we did that?
The entire landscaping, right.
And there's no budget on it right now?
There's no budget on it. I think we met with, with Councilman Draymond about it, designed a landscape that would match the original 1950s look of the park. And at this point, we have a contractor on board, a plan that could get it done, but it does cost that much.
Okay, and, and is there, is there a way, Mr. Starbird, we can put this as part of our 1 million dollars that we-
Well, if that's your direction, we certainly can. I mean, it can be plugged into any year you want.
I'm a believer of finishing a job you start. I don't know, that's my, me. I don't know the rest of my colleagues, but we spend a lot of money putting new lights in, we put all new streets and all this stuff, so.
Well, we, we thought, we thought we could use some savings in our budget, but I think it does make sense just to do it all at one time and ask for the money in CIP.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Draymond.
Just to clarify, when I met with Parks and Recreation on this subject, I was not a council member. I have met since, when I asked the question as to where, where we were, where the city was with that project, then I had been elected to office. At that time, I was president of the Shopping Park Association. Part of it is, is in relation to what was taken out or, or killed off as a result of the, the project up there. The other part is that a lot of this was planted in 1966 and '67 when the shopping park was created, and some of those, the bulk of it, are particular type of hedges that have a lifespan, and we've reached that lifespan, and they can't be pruned up, they're just dying, it's as simple as that. They're 30 years or so or more, and they're, they're going away. So, since it was going to be a need for re-landscaping, I asked that we look at the original concepts that the original architect had in mind when they built the shopping park.
And also, I think some, a lot of the work, because of the trees, requires handwork to dig that up so that the trees, the roots aren't damaged and those type of things.
I think you need, landscaping lasted for 40 years, you know, you need, we need to just do it, get it done, so at least we're done with that section of the town.
And as a coincidence, we are this year at 40 years.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys are okay with that?
Yeah.
I think staff is looking for direction.
We've already made a note.
Yeah, we need to complete the project.
Okay. I think we've, we've talked about the community aquatics center.
What is the grand street park? What is that?
This is, uh, this is the housing project, proposed housing project that Housing and Development is working on.
All right, yeah, that's the special-
This is the phase two.
That's the phase two part of it.
This is anticipating a contribution of the development of the open space as part of the housing project.
Okay. And that's unfunded at this point?
It's unfunded at this point.
Okay.
What else?
Want to talk about-
Any park, soccer fields.
We've got some slides we can show you, we've looked at potential soccer fields, we looked at Freeway Site A and C.
We listed these so we don't lose track of them, but you don't, you see, we don't have any there, but you, you brought up at the last CIP, the, the feedback you're getting from the community on soccer fields. Part of our meeting with Dr. Escalante tomorrow is to talk about the Columbus Soccer Field Site, which I continue to believe from the standpoint of timing and cost is, if indeed you want to get a soccer field done, is probably one of the most cost-effective ones you'd be able to do. But again, we haven't heard the details on that. As they say, the devil's in the details, and we haven't heard what would really be expected of us on that site. But if indeed, it's a matter of, we tear down the buildings and then put in a soccer field that they get to use during school hours, and we can use the rest of the time and there's no additional land lease or land contribution expected, that could very well be the most cost-effective means of getting a soccer field quickly. But there are other options for soccer fields that we've looked at, some of which you might look at and go, we're not going down that road because of neighborhood reaction. I mean, we do have some sites that frankly, would impact neighborhoods if we wanted to begin to look at some of those options. We have, and, and George's staff has done layouts on a number of different sites where soccer fields might be able to be built and frankly, land more readily available. But they all carry with them a painful downside, which is reaction from neighborhoods to traffic and noise and those kinds of things.
Okay, I have a 12 o'clock meeting I have to be at, and-
So do I.
I'm not sure if this is a good time to break and recess, reconvene at 1 o'clock. Mr. Draymond?
I, I was going to ask, I just need some guidance on this. I had one other thing I wanted to ask that we look at with regard to parks, and I'll be happy to do it later or now, whatever.
Why don't we do it now in case we need to work on something, suggest?
So, let me be the one to raise the topic that will probably engender some groans. Dog park, a dog park. I had spoken to Mr. Chapchin earlier about finding out whether there are existing parks in the city where a portion of, or a small park could be created in some location that would accommodate, what we are hearing is a growing interest in this. A lot of our residents who are currently taking their animals elsewhere out of the city in order to, to have use of that kind of a facility. I know that growing up, we had a, what was it, a county park near my home, which is now a city park to my surprise, so somebody purchased something along the way.
New York.
New York Park, and, and I had had that in mind because it is a small park, relatively speaking, the, the layout of it is naturally sort of walled anyway. But whether it's that site or any site, and I know that Mr. Chapchin has done some research into this before, but I would like to just throw it out there for, for discussion. I know perhaps this can come back to us later.
Well, actually, we, you know, we have it in the PowerPoint. We had done some of the research and it was on the shelf. We did it about a year ago because we had some emails from people who were interested in it. So, we've taken a look at several sites and the feasibility and what the cost may be, so we can bring that to you if it's at 1 o'clock or whatever it may be.
If you've been reading the papers lately, not just here, but all over, you, you have noticed an increase in comments about it, both, both in wanting that and the problems people are having in taking their dogs to a public park, a regular public park. So, I would like to at least look at it regardless of what the council would decide they, how they would want to proceed or not proceed.
Well, it, it's certainly a regional issue and I assume a national issue in urban settings because I know, for instance, the city of Santa Monica is now having issues with LA residents and their ability to use the dog park there, so.
They do have a tendency to attract people from outside, and I think Santa Monica's dealing with it in a way where you, you have to have a dog license from Santa Monica to, to get into the park.
So, they're registering dogs with Santa Monica dresses in order to-
It was actually, it did a piece where it was a dog outside.
Mr. Starbird.
So, yeah, I think we need to look at, let's see what we can do.
I think the key question for the council would be is whether you want to begin to evaluate what the options might be, and there, there could be a number of options. Even presuming that you, you would probably stay afraid, away from converting an existing small neighborhood park where you're going to have a lot of neighbors, maybe the dog lovers love it, but the other neighbors who have been using the park, maybe not. But there could be other options, whether it's some of our freeway property, or whether, Bob and I were just talking about, you know, potentially the north end of Crescent Valley Park.